Thank you, Rick. Are we live? Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call the order of the City of Two Rivers City Council meeting for Monday, August 16th, 2021. Can you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Give me roll call, please. Here.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Jeff Dahlke.
Here.
Tracy Coach.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Jay Remicker.
Here.
Bonnie Shimilounis.
Here.
Adam Wohuski.
Here.
Thank you. We have a full house. We're going to skip number four. We're going to skip number five. There is no public hearing tonight. Number six has input from the public, and we did not get any notices of anyone wanting to call in tonight or calling in and giving us information. So Greg and Jamie confirmed that. However, there is an opportunity for input from the public to the public that is here. So what we'd like you to do is if you want to address the council with any agenda item or any items you'd like on future agendas, please step up to the podium on my right, your left. The microphone is now hot, right, Rick? The microphone's on. Speak into the microphone. Give us your name and address. And again, address any questions that are on the agenda for tonight or anything you'd like on future agendas. So I'll go ahead and call anyone who wants to come up can come up right now. I was giving people a chance to change their mind if they want to come up. Okay. We'll move off of number six on to number seven, Council Communications. Any letters or other communication from citizens that council wants to share and share with the public?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mark.
Sunday afternoon, beautiful day at the beach, compliments to the band and all the activity. But my wife was working, and so I had a chance to walk around. I walked around by that wooden chair. And boy, that was a beehive of activity. Lots of different people and families were sitting there. I talked to one family, and they just complimented what a great idea after they took all the pictures of the family. So again, credit to Park and Recs and the individuals who donated and built that chair. Great addition to the beach.
Thank you, Mark. Adam?
I got one email from a lady who wanted me to pass this on, and she's very adamant to say no to any kind of a vaccine, passport, or mandate for the City of Two Rivers. Some of you guys probably also got that email, but she wanted that expressed.
Okay, thank you. I think that person agrees.
No vaccine mandate or passport for the City of Two Rivers.
Okay, thank you. I didn't catch that, so thank you.
I received the same.
Any other calls or communications? Bonnie?
One person called me and was concerned about the expense of the Park 365. But I told her, you know, you should at least hear the other side, and she agreed with that. She's willing to do that.
Thank you, Bonnie. That is on the docket tonight to see if we can get more information on the proposed cost, which then allows you to do other things like possibly get grants. So I hear what you're saying. Thank you for that. Any other? Jay?
I was at the Shawto Park this weekend, and there was some people from out of town that were enjoying the new playground equipment. And they've frequently come here, so they said it was a really good upgrade. Their kids are happy to come here now and spend a day here instead of just half a day. So they said hats off to us for updating our park equipment and getting the supply in line and going.
Yeah, a lot of activity this weekend, you're right.
Right.
That's great.
It was crazy.
Thank you, Parks and Rec and all the advisory board and all of us as taxpayers to help contribute to those upgrades. So thank you. Any other calls? I had a couple, so I'll go ahead and I was giving you guys a chance. I agree with Mark on people at the beach were commenting on the big chair, also asking where the hashtag or #ExploreTwoRivers is on there for photo opportunity. But one mentioned, could it be positioned, because it was so crowded in front of the band shell, people would have used it. A lot of pictures would have been taken. So it was kind of out of the way, just as a thought. I'm just saying, thank you for sharing. I'll pass it on. Bands on the beach, big hit on Sunday, so a lot of comments on that when we were there. And one person asked, why aren't we charging for parking? Because the beach was so crowded, not charging residents, but charging visitors. So I said, that's something we've kicked around in the past, but it's something that obviously we could look on further. But right now, there would be no reason to charge ever the residents of Two Rivers to park there. But they saw it as a money opportunity with a lot of other towners, so to help pay for the grooming of the beach and other things. That was just a comment from one of the many people at the beach. Any other? Jeff?
I was talking with one of the local business owners today, and they were wondering if we could try some way to direct traffic down Main Street to 22nd Street and into the beach, to town that way. That way, we're sending them down through town, because now they're turning on 17th Street, they're not even coming into town.
In other words, you're saying, can you, through signage, could you
Right.
create a main entrance on 22nd versus having them cut through on 17th?
Right.
That way, they at least see downtown.
Right.
And maybe stop and maybe see what's going on. All right, good thought. I know we're
Even if it's just a matter of, you know, getting the signage, or even if they have to go back up, what is that, Jackson Street, and cut back on 17th, people that aren't from town aren't going to know the difference anyway, so that way, they got to go through town twice.
I know that Elizabeth is looking to do a potential grant ask in November for new wayfinding signs, which could maybe help with that.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, seeing on council reports from boards, committees, commissions, anything you want to share? Mark?
I'd encourage the public, if you're interested in the budgeting process, we have a very active layout of personnel and finance committee meetings, starting in September all the way through October. They'll be published, and that's when the budget will be built. I encourage everyone to come if you're interested.
Great. Tomorrow night is, you're more than welcome to come and find out what's going on. The Celebrate Two Rivers Committee is meeting tomorrow night, and the Branding Committee meets on Thursday night. Public is welcome to any one of those meetings. Number nine, City Manager Report. Greg, we're going to turn it over to you. We have a lot of visitors here who are going to participate in swearing in opportunities tonight, right?
You noticed, we have a number of guests in the audience. We're glad to have them here to congratulate some of our new employees and our, and some newly promoted employees. I was telling Brian, our auditor, who's listed further down, it's the biggest turnout I've ever seen for the annual audit report, but actually, he was kind of excited for a while there. So I will, I'll take the liberty on the first introduction. We recently had occasion to recruit for a new head of Buildings and Grounds for here at City Hall, and that's good, because last week, just before, two weeks ago, just before he started, the sump pump alarm started going off on the weekends, and the police shift commanders were calling, and of course, everything starts going. So we're very pleased to welcome aboard, as of last week, Kevin Kriesik. Kevin, why don't you just step up so everybody knows you here? Kevin comes to us from Felician Village and had previously also worked at Fox Hills in facilities maintenance. So when it comes to plumbing, HVAC, building maintenance, those kinds of things, considerable experience, and we're very happy to welcome him onboard as the person in charge of looking after this very special building that the community values so much. So, yeah, absolutely.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Welcome.
And next, Chief Denzine for Fire Department Introductions.
So first, we're going to introduce our new hire. We're very fortunate, Louie, if you want to stand up and come on up here, actually. So very fortunate, we had an opening in the Fire Department. We did a search. Actually, most of it came from our paid-on-call list. As I said before, we were very fortunate. We found Louie about a little over a year ago, I think. He actually started with our department as a paid-on-call firefighter, went through the fire medic program at LTC. We actually had the opportunity to work with him as he was being mentored in his paramedic. We thought he was kind of all right. I mean, we weren't too sure on him at first, but you know, we ended up deciding to keep him, and we threw an offer out to him. This young man is phenomenal. He's in extreme physical shape. He actually helps to drive the members around him to increase their physicality, but also to be in shape. He has got one of the best attitudes and demeanors that we have found in a very, very long time, and we believe that Louie is going to help drive the mission of not only the Fire Department, but of the City of Two Rivers to where exactly we want it through providing excellent customer service and just being the leader that we've come to expect out of our public servants. So I'd like to introduce you, Louie Kambalik. All right, so you're going to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Louie Kambalik.
I, Louie Kambalik.
Who have been appointed
Who have been appointed.
To the Office of Firefighter Paramedic.
To the Office of Firefighter Paramedic.
In and for the City of Two Rivers.
In and for the City of Two Rivers.
In Manitowoc County.
In Manitowoc County.
But have not yet entered.
But not have entered.
Upon the duties thereof.
Upon the duty thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Will faithfully discharge the duties.
Upset office.
Upset office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Can I see a signature there?
Sure.
I got it. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, buddy.
You want to go and shake off all the hands of the council?
Yes.
Congratulations, by the way. Do you wear the tripping hazard, Louie? Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Next, I'd like to invite up Patrick Krinek. Oh, yeah. I don't know where to start with Pat, so Pat is, I know, right? Ooh, gosh. Everything I rehearsed just left. No. Pat is one of those salt-of-the-earth pillars of the community. We are so, so fortunate to have Pat. He started out a little over 20 years ago in the department, and he started as a paid-on-call, worked his way up. He's been an acting captain for a number of years, and to see the drive and the mentorship and how he just cares so much, not only for the city, but also for the fellow members, and how he makes us better on a continual basis, it's, it's pretty awe-inspiring, to be perfectly honest with you. Pat is, he's not only active in the Fire Department, he's a Kiwanis member. He teaches football, so nobody throw anything at him, because I'm not sure he'd be able to catch it, but, but he does that, you know, he runs the Key Club. He's just, he loves this community so much, and he continually pours into it. And I just cannot wait to see the fantastic things that this man is going to bring, not only to our city, but, but to the department and to the members that he can touch, so. You've got a lot to live up to, man. Sorry. All right, Jamie? All right, raise your right hand. I, Patrick Krinek.
I, Patrick Krinek.
Who have been appointed
Who have been appointed.
To the Office of Fire Captain.
To the Office of Fire Captain.
In and for the City of Two Rivers.
In and for the City of Two Rivers.
In Manitowoc County.
In Manitowoc County.
But have not yet entered.
But have not yet entered.
Upon the duties thereof.
Upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Upset office.
Upset office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. So we're going to have Pat's lovely wife, Angela, pin him. We didn't pin Louie, because in our department, that is something that somebody has to earn through their probationary period. So after the course of a year, then we will have Louie, well, maybe, well, we'll have Louie pinned as well, so. Oh, I gave her the badge. I figured they're easier. Perfect. If you want to go shake hands. For the court. You got to get a warrant for it. Patrick, congratulations.
Next up, Chief Kolmeyer for introduction of new employees and congratulations and pinning of promotions, new sergeants in the PD.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I respectfully ask the council if we could take care of the sergeants whenever they're available. Like many things in emergency services, law enforcement and fire, they got tied up on a call, so they told us they'd be here in about 15 minutes, about five minutes ago. So hopefully, they'll come in near the end.
Not a problem. I think we'll all make room for them.
Thanks. So I'd like to actually introduce right now Matthew Lutze. Matthew is one of our newest officers, and he is an eight-year veteran of the Marinette Police Department. And he decided that he wanted to make a change and move back over to this area and came to Two Rivers. So we were fortunate to actually to steal someone away from some other place rather than it being the reverse. Matt's got a lot of experience, actually, a lot of instructorships, too. He's a drug recognition expert, Taser instructor, and Alice instructor, just to kind of name a few. So it's actually a really good catch for us, and we're hoping for a lot from Matt, and we know things will turn out well. Tonight, he's here with his family, his wife Amber is over there, his mom and dad, daughter, is that Clara there? And then Henry, he was the guy that wanted to chime in in the beginning of the meeting.
All right, awesome. So with that, Jamie?
Yep.
You can, it's right here. Yeah. So raise your right hand. Do you want them to hear him? Sure. Great. I, Matthew Lutze. I, Matthew Lutze. Who have been appointed Who have been appointed To the Office of Police Officer. To the Office of Police Officer. In and for the City of Two Rivers. In and for the City of Two Rivers. In Manitowoc County. But have not yet entered. But have not yet entered. Upon the duties thereof. Upon the duties thereof. Swear that I will support the Constitution Swear that I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. And will faithfully discharge the duties. And will faithfully discharge the duties. Upset office. Upset office. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. All right. All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. So we're going to have Pat's lovely wife, Angela, pin him. We didn't pin Louie, because in our department, that is something that somebody has to earn through their probationary period. So after the course of a year, then we will have Louie, well, maybe, well, we'll have Louie pinned as well, so. Oh, I gave her the badge. I figured they're easier. Perfect. If you want to go shake hands. For the court. You got to get a warrant for it. Patrick, congratulations.
Next up, Chief Kolmeyer for introduction of new employees and congratulations and pinning of promotions, new sergeants in the PD.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I respectfully ask the council if we could take care of the sergeants whenever they're available. Like many things in emergency services, law enforcement and fire, they got tied up on a call, so they told us they'd be here in about 15 minutes, about five minutes ago. So hopefully, they'll come in near the end.
Not a problem. I think we'll all make room for them.
Thanks. So I'd like to actually introduce right now Matthew Lutze. Matthew is one of our newest officers, and he is an eight-year veteran of the Marinette Police Department. And he decided that he wanted to make a change and move back over to this area and came to Two Rivers. So we were fortunate to actually to steal someone away from some other place rather than it being the reverse. Matt's got a lot of experience, actually, a lot of instructorships, too. He's a drug recognition expert, Taser instructor, and Alice instructor, just to kind of name a few. So it's actually a really good catch for us, and we're hoping for a lot from Matt, and we know things will turn out well. Tonight, he's here with his family, his wife Amber is over there, his mom and dad, daughter, is that Clara there? And then Henry, he was the guy that wanted to chime in in the beginning of the meeting.
All right, awesome. So with that, Jamie?
Yep.
You can, it's right here. Yeah. So raise your right hand. Do you want them to hear him?
Sure.
Great. I, Matthew Lutze. I, Matthew Lutze. Who have been appointed Who have been appointed To the Office of Police Officer. To the Office of Police Officer. In and for the City of Two Rivers. In and for the City of Two Rivers. In Manitowoc County. In Manitowoc County. But have not yet entered. But have not yet entered. Upon the duties thereof. Upon the duties thereof. Swear that I will support the Constitution Swear that I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. And will faithfully discharge the duties. And will faithfully discharge the duties. Upset office. Upset office. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Welcome onboard.
Beware the tripping hazard. It's part of the probationary thing. Congratulations.
All right, as luck would have it, the other two are here, so. First, I'd like to call in Sergeant Robert Wondry. There he is, all right. All right, we got the little one with, so this is the other one that wanted to chime in a little bit near him there. So I have Rob Wondry, I think everybody knows Rob. Rob has been with the Two Rivers Police Department for about eight years. Lots of family here also, wife, there we go. Rob's one of our drug recognition experts. He's also a field trained officer. We're very proud of Rob and all the things that he's done, mentored a lot of individuals through some difficult times, also a lot of new officers in the training. We look to Rob as one of our, our main field trained officers, and he does an excellent job and was perfect choice for our new sergeant position. So we promoted two sergeants, two new sergeant positions, as, as a replacement of one of the lieutenant positions, shift commander spots that we had vacant. We wanted to bring back the sergeant position, because we felt that it was a great way to build up the officers, offer a mentor for other officers, give them a taste of supervision, and hopefully someday see those lieutenant bars on them. So with that, I'd like to introduce again Robert Wondry and have him do the oath.
Raise your right hand. Hold it or should I hold it? You can hold it. I, Robert Wondry.
I, Robert Wondry.
Who have been appointed
Who have been appointed
To the Office of Police Sergeant.
To the Office of Police Sergeant.
In and for the City of Two Rivers.
In and for the City of Two Rivers.
In Manitowoc County.
In Manitowoc County.
But have not yet entered.
But have not yet entered.
Upon the duties thereof.
Upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Upset office.
Upset office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. Nice job. Congratulations. Thank you. Now, they're a little out of the routine, they weren't here right away, so. Bear the court. Well deserved.
I think you got one left to try to get.
That's right. All right.
Zero injuries to date, yes.
Last but certainly not least, I'd like to introduce Nicholas Spurney, Sergeant Nicholas Spurney. All right, so tonight, Nick's mom and dad are here with Nick tonight. Again, Nicholas, he's been with the department for about five years or so. Again, you probably recognize him out and about on second shift primarily, and that's the shift he'll be on as a sergeant. Much like Rob, he's been one of our field trained officers and also one that we look to, to help train our new officers, and does a phenomenal job at it. It's been very difficult to get people that have enough experience within the department. We had a period of time where we had a lot of hires, so a lot of younger folks, and Nick is on the other, just on the other end of that, and we look to Nick to help us out with training new officers, a very, very important function in our agency, because it really sets the groundwork for everybody moving forward. So with that, I'd like to introduce you, Nick, Sergeant Nicholas Spurney, and we can do the oath.
I, Nicholas Spurney.
I, Nicholas Spurney.
Who have been appointed
Who have been
To the Office of Police Sergeant. In and for the City of Two Rivers.
In and for the City of Two Rivers.
In Manitowoc County.
In Manitowoc County.
But have not yet entered.
But have not yet entered.
Upon the duties thereof.
Upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Upset office.
Upset office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. I'll shake her after. Congratulations. Thanks. Congratulations.
All right, thank you. I'm just going to step out for a few minutes with the families, and then I'll be back in.
Thank you. I just have to point out, this council has set among its goals for last year and the current year broadly stated, the recruitment, retention, and professional development of quality people to provide quality services to this community. And tonight's a great indication, both with the new hires and with the folks that have
That is included in the financial statement. To be an unmodified opinion, essentially that means that I believe your financial statements are complete and accurate according to our financial standards. So that's exactly what you need. Second bullet point there, also included in your financial statements, as a part of every financial statement audit for a government entity, go through and consider how things are processed for. We refer to. In terms of the internal control comments, there are two items that are listed as findings. The first one there you can see is listed as finding 2020 operation of that report. That's included, that's really to. Second item there, finding 2020 dash two adjustments to this. Part of the audit process, we look at a lot of financial information. Part of that process is common for us to. Identify, are reflected. Both of those reports are included in your financial statements. Interested? Answer a question? And this next slide is really is intended to give you a really brief overview of that letter, that management communication letter, the staple document that you have. That letter includes information that we are required to communicate. Very standardized. References on here. Also require. I would describe these as very standardized terms in communication. The language is. I just wanted to point it out because nothing from my perspective. Going through that, if you do have. First slide is focusing on your general fund, looking at your general fund, fund balance, essentially your equity reserves that you have as of the end of the year, and we have it in a comparative format end of 2019. As we look at this, there's a couple of things that I do want to point out. First off, your total balance, you. Balance or your. All ending balance there. One of the things. Assigned category. From that auditor's lot of attention, really the amount that's available for working capital at the end of 2019. The reason that's there is because of this deficit cash advances and the money that you've lent to others. I think it's.
I would just note, and we've, we've discussed this with council over the past year, that's both as a result of almost, close to a $200,000 positive net result from 2020 operations in the general fund. It is also because of council approving, in the case of a couple of our TIFs and the water utility, some short-term inter-fund loans from other internal, non-general fund sources that had available cash and are being paid interest from the funds with deficits. And so the general fund is not nearly as, I'll say, cash compromised. We certainly hope that next year, when, when the audit report is presented, that will have emerged into positive territory and will continue moving that way as the utilities improve and the TIFs with the passage of time pay down some of those deficit balances. So, just a little comment.
And I agree with those completely.
And to Mr. Bittner's question that I anticipated, that, that along with things like positive growth and equalized value that we talk about on the agenda later, are both things that the bond rating agencies put a fair amount of stock in. And this, this has been a negative for us historically, and it, it is getting better.
This gives you a snapshot of your debt service funds. These funds are restricted for future principal interest payments. Into the financial. Lot of information. I just wanted to give you a snapshot of some of your other funds, so I know there's a lot of information here. This is, this is walking through your special revenue funds, again giving you your balances. All on the total. At 1.3. Now you're at 900,000. Primary reason. Other things that I see there are a few. There are some improvements.
The, the fund identified as business industrial revolving loans is our 290 fund. I would just remind council, 300,000 of that change would be reflected in the loan made to Riverside Foods, which is, is being repaid, I think it's over four years, it's a relatively short repayment for that $300,000 loan. We have likewise though been spending down some of the balance in Fund 290, reflecting the city's cost of maintaining the Paragon building as we work to get that, get that asset off our books and replace it with some cash hopefully for that. And there'll be yet another discussion of that in closed session tonight.
So that line, if that was to be sold, that line would increase next year because funds would go into that.
The cash resulting from any such sale would get booked and would be reflected in that line.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Using.
Yes.
Projects funds, again a lot of information. I see improved. Where your balances are deficits. Three years, all you went from. Important to get some. Want to give you. Whenever we look at utility. Looking at your revenues. And see the. Venues. On your operating income, you also have non-operating items and then you also. That relates.
Right, because their reserves balance, we needed to shore that up a little bit.
We were into negative territory with fund balance for the electric utility too.
The Wisconsin Public Service. Just to walk you through this, this gives you the change in that position, so. Terms of the presentation. Have 8 million. One of that. That's normally. Some restricted. Reference on. To give you a snapshot, all of that ending that position. Page 31 kind of. What happened? Sorry about that, hopefully this is better.
We, we weren't going out over the air, I just got a text from the home front indicating Brian's audible was not there.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions on electric?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Then if we can flip ahead to the next slide. And this just gives you a snapshot of the water utility, again same format, focusing revenue, revenues, expenses, and your overall operating income. Again, I like to see trends, you can see the trend of your operating income up to 780,000 over the previous year. From that operating income, we also have non-operating items as well, again as your capital contributions and transfers. You can see the transfers out, 342,000. Again, a significant piece of that is the tax equivalent, which comes back to your general fund. In terms of the overall change in net position, it's going to be the same page numbers that I just referenced, but change in net position, an increase of your overall equity of 591,000. Again, certainly when I step back and look at that, certainly a positive year. Couple other things that I do want to reference there, the non-operating revenues line does include additional grant revenue, there's approximately 216,000 in grant revenue. And then to kind of tie this back to the discussion on the general fund, one of the things that we look at is, when I look at the water utility, how much money have they borrowed? What's that outstanding balance and how quickly are they able to repay? If I work back through time here, at the end of 2018, they had a balance owed to others of approx, other funds of approximately 2.8 million. At the end of 2019, that was 2.6 million. At the end of 2020, 2.1 million. So certainly steady progress there. Obviously you've got a little bit of work to do in terms of continuing that momentum. But I, again noteworthy that you were able to repay 505,000.
To look at our long-term debt, and of course we issue new debt because we keep reinvesting in infrastructure as we should, but there still is a pretty good sized dip or a reduction coming, I think in 2023 as we finally pay off the 20-year borrowing for the filtration plant upgrade. So, that's still some good news on the horizon, cash-wise for the fund.
Okay, then just want to jump ahead to the sewer utility. Again, similar information, similar format, operating revenues, operating expenses and operating income, 773,000. Again, want to point out the transfers out, 350,000, leaving you with change in net position or overall increase in your net position or equity reserves of 280,000. Now, I do want to just step back because again, if you compare that to 18 and 19, certainly very impressive years back in 18 and 19, I just want to point out your capital contributions in those years. So the majority of the increase for 2018, for example, out of the 1.3 million increase, 1.2 was coming from your capital contributions. So just wanted to point that out. There too, in terms of the amount that's presented as due to other funds, at the end of 2018, the sewer utility did owe other funds 582,000. That was down 151,000 at the end of 2019, and you've paid that off at the end of 2020.
Just also, council members may recall, the sewer utility has got a capital equipment replacement reserve, a reserve fund balance of about 1.1 million that's specifically for replacement of plant equipment. It does help with our liquidity through the year, but it's not, it's not a really spendable fund balance, it's, it's a reserve or restricted fund balance.
Right, and if you get into page 29, that is presented as a net position that's restricted for capital assets. And there's a couple other places where that's referenced in the financial statements as well. So, so that's the financial information that I wanted to walk through. If anyone has any questions, again, I'd be more than happy to, to ask that or to answer any questions. I, I really think the key is, is your general fund and focusing on that and just making sure that you can continue to increase that deficit and that deficit cash reserves. So, nice to see you though, good year.
And if there's a desire for follow-up discussion at Personnel and Finance with, with our finance director, Dave Boos, or with potentially Brian, we, we welcome that. Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Appreciate seeing you so early in the year, in this almost non-COVID year, almost. Thank you. I close this, am I going to be internal? Oh, so the appropriate action, recommended action for council on the audit report would be a motion to receive and place on file.
I'll make the motion to receive and file this report.
Thank you. We got a motion, a second, all in, we could just do all in favor, right? All in favor of accepting the audit report that's in front of us?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, thank you for all your help as well. He's already left the building.
Hey Greg, you are up.
Very good. Yeah, next up is my city manager's report. Trying to keep this one. Last words. Work of course continues on our street projects. 24th Street is pretty close to being buttoned up. Concrete work is, is done except for some minor work at the intersections. I know I crossed Washington Street today and that definitely needs, needs some work, some gravel first and some concrete in a hurry. But the, the driving lanes, parking lanes, curb, sidewalk work, driveway approaches, and carriage walk replacements where desired, have been completed on 24th Street. Last week, they put topsoil, seed, and mulch on the terrace areas where restoration was needed. The landscape contractor has to be paying attention to keeping those watered for the next seven days. After that, it is no longer the contractor's responsibility. We will probably be keeping, we encourage homeowners to keep it moist, but we'll be keeping an eye on that with our city forces as well to try to get the, the grass started back up there again. We do want to get a communication out about tree varieties available for planting where there is room in the appropriate places along the terrace. I drove through there today, wasn't real happy with the amount of dirt I still saw in the street. We were told the contractor was going to get that done last Friday. The city will be sweeping that tomorrow and if we need to have some consideration for that, we will. It, it needs to look like a, a done project and sweeping it up would be one of the things there. That is 24th, pretty quickly coming to a close. 25th.
... avenues. From your operating income, you also have non-operating items and then you also.
Right, because their reserves balance, we needed to shore that up a little bit.
We were into negative territory with fund balance for the electric utility, too.
The Wisconsin Public Service. Just to walk you through this, this gives you the change in net position, so. Terms of the presentation. Have eight million. One of that. That's normally. I'm restricted. Reference on. To give you a snapshot, all of that ending that position. And page thirty-one, kind of.
Sorry about that. Hopefully this is better.
We weren't going out over the year. I just got a text from the home front indicating Brian's audible was not there.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions on electric?
Thank you.
Okay. Then if we can flip ahead to the next slide. And this just gives you a snapshot of the water utility. Again, same format, focusing revenue, revenues, expenses, and your overall operating income. Again, I like to see trends. You can see the trend of your operating income up to seven hundred and eighty thousand over the previous year. From that operating income, we also have non-operating items as well, again, as your capital contributions and transfers. You can see the transfers out, three hundred and forty-two thousand. Again, a significant piece of that is the tax equivalent, which comes back to your general fund. In terms of the overall change in net position, it's going to be the same page numbers that I just referenced, but change in net position, an increase of your overall equity of five hundred and ninety-one thousand. Again, certainly when I step back and look at that, certainly a positive year. Couple other things that I do want to reference there. The non-operating revenues line does include additional grant revenue. There's approximately two hundred and sixteen thousand in grant revenue. And then to kind of tie this back to the discussion on the general fund, one of the things that we look at is, when I look at the water utility, how much money have they borrowed? What's that outstanding balance? And how quickly are they able to repay? If I work back through time here, at the end of two thousand and eighteen, they had a balance owed to others of approx- other funds of approximately two point eight million. At the end of two thousand and nineteen, that was two point six million. At the end of two thousand and twenty, two point one million. So certainly steady progress there. Obviously, you've got a little bit of work to do in terms of continuing that momentum. But I, again, noteworthy that you were able to repay five hundred and five thousand.
To look at our long-term debt, and of course, we issue new debt because we keep reinvesting in infrastructure as we should, but there still is a pretty good-sized dip or a reduction coming, I think, in twenty twenty-three as we finally pay off the twenty-year borrowing for the filtration plant upgrade. So that's still some good news on the horizon cash-wise for the fund.
Okay, then just want to jump ahead to the sewer utility. Again, similar information, similar format. Operating revenues, operating expenses, and operating income, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand. Again, want to point out the transfers out, three hundred and fifty, leaving you with change in net position or overall increase in your net position or equity reserves of two hundred and eighty thousand. Now, I do want to just step back because, again, if you compare that to eighteen and nineteen, certainly very impressive years back in eighteen and nineteen, I just want to point out your capital contributions in those years. So the majority of the increase for two thousand and eighteen, for example, out of the one point three million increase, one point two was coming from your capital contributions. So just wanted to point that out. There, too, in terms of the amount that's presented as due to other funds, at the end of two thousand and eighteen, the sewer utility did owe other funds five hundred and eighty-two thousand. That was down to a hundred and fifty-one thousand at the end of two thousand and nineteen, and you've paid that off at the end of two thousand and twenty.
Just also, council members may recall, the sewer utility has got a capital equipment replacement reserve, a reserve fund balance of about one point one million specifically for replacement of plant equipment. It does help with our liquidity through the year, but it's not, it's not really spendable fund balance. It's, it's a reserve or restricted fund balance.
Right. And if you get into page twenty-nine, that is presented as a net position that's restricted for capital assets. And there's a couple other places where that's referenced in the financial statements as well. So. So that's the financial information that I wanted to walk through. If anyone has any questions, again, I'd be more than happy to, to ask that or to answer any questions. I, I really think the key is, is your general fund and focusing on that and just making sure that you can continue to increase that deficit and that deficit cash reserves. So, nice to see you, though. Good year.
And if there's a desire for follow-up discussion at Personnel and Finance with, with our Finance Director Dave Buss or with potentially Brian, we, we welcome that. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Appreciate seeing you so early in the year, in this almost non-COVID year. Almost. Thank you. I close this? Am I going to be internal? Oh, so the appropriate action, recommended action for council on the audit report would be a motion to receive and place on file.
I'll make the motion to receive and file this report.
Thank you.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, all in, we could just do all in favor, right? All in favor of accepting the audit report that's in front of us?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for all your help as well. He's already left the building. Hey Greg, you are up. Very good. Yeah, next up is my city manager's report. Work, of course, continues on our street projects. Twenty-fourth Street is pretty close to being buttoned up. Concrete work is, is done except for some minor work at the intersections. I know I crossed Washington Street today, and that definitely needs, needs some work, some gravel first and some concrete in a hurry. But the, the driving lanes, parking lanes, curb, sidewalk work, driveway approaches, and carriage walk replacements where desired have been completed on Twenty-fourth Street. Last week, they put topsoil, seed, and mulch on the terrace areas where restoration was needed. The landscape contractor has to be paying attention to keeping those watered for the next seven days. After that, it is no longer the contractor's responsibility. We will probably be keeping, we encourage homeowners to keep it moist, but we'll be keeping an eye on that with our city forces as well to try to get the, the grass started back up there again. We do want to get a communication out about tree varieties available for planting where there is room in the appropriate places along the terrace. I drove through there today, wasn't real happy with the amount of dirt I still saw in the street. We were told the contractor was going to get that done last Friday. The city will be sweeping that tomorrow, and if we need to have some consideration for that, we will. It, it needs to look like a, a done project, and sweeping it up would be one of the things there. That is Twenty-fourth, pretty quickly coming to a close. Twenty-fifth and Madison, on Twenty-fifth, utilities completed and functioning. The main line paving is done, and we're hoping by the end of this week, the curb and gutter pours, the parking lanes curb and gutter, will be done. Concrete handwork will follow that along with landscaping and restoration. So Jim might grab me for saying this, but I, we certainly hope before Labor Day weekend that project will be at the point Twenty-fourth Street is now. Madison Street reconstruction, as of today, between fif- between Nineteenth and Twenty, sanitary and water mains are in along with the public side laterals who still need to be tied into the residences. Storm sewer work will begin soon. Again, storm sewer is the shallowest, so that goes in last. Work on private laterals has not commenced. Jim, do we have a timeframe on private lateral work? Soon as the publics are, are wrapped up. Water main is completed from Nineteenth to Twenty-first with all testing completed and sanitary sewer still being worked on. But the contractors making tracks on that project. Any questions on the current street projects while we've, while we got them up? Okay. If not, again, the new zip line is installed at Neshota Park and already being enjoyed by lots of people in addition to our Parks and Rec Director, who I thought it was, told her, I thought it was really great that she had a color-coordinated outfit along with the equipment. So that, that's, that piece of equipment's getting a, a great reception. And I'll skip ahead, but as Mr. Bittner noted earlier, the new feature at Neshota Beach with the giant Adirondack chair, a project completed by some of our highly skilled seasonal staff, Mike Tim, Randy Bry, Tim Myers, and other seasonals. I knew when I saw that in Mike Tim's driveway that something was up, because I'm not sure that his wife would let that just be put out in their front yard. After it's weathered for a season or so, it probably will be painted or stained in the right color, and the, and the new logo, still new, will likely appear on it. But kudos to Parks and Rec Department, including our very capable rec supervisor and this year's intern featured in the photo, and well done. Economically, did it smart, and it's really being enjoyed. Can't wait to see what they craft next year, Terry, because, you know, they'll have to outdo themselves again next year.
With all the attention it's getting and people using it, can we put our logo on there in some fashion so we get credit for all these pictures?
Yeah, the intent, Mark, right now is to wait until next season after the treated timber has weathered a bit and probably paint it the bright orange-red with white logo. It probably could go on there somewhere sooner on a sort of a temporary or interim.
Very, I would say, because I bet I saw, I bet I saw twelve pictures taken. They were sent all over to family and friends.
You know what? That will be done. I think there, it could be mounted on there and then, then painted at a later time. Terry is on that momentarily. She'll be on that. Thank you, Mark. Shared this with the Room Tax Committee last week. Wanted to share it with full council tonight. We've. We, we've talked about how room tax receipts are going very well in the city from both our hotels, motels, and the growing cadre of vacation rentals, thirty-some in town. As of the end of July, we can officially report on pretty much full collections through the month of June because there's a one-month grace period there for the lodging establishments to get their room tax in. You'll see that in the first six months of the year, we have seen ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars in room tax revenues. In the three prior years, we had not topped forty thousand as of the end of June. So this is better than double what we have seen in past years. So as we've been sharing in our discussions about a new tourism marketing agreement and with, with our Room Tax Committee, the Room Tax collections are really kicking butt, to use a term of art, in Two Rivers this year. So a lot of people here enjoying our community and Room Tax collections. Again, fifty-two percent of that now going to the Visitor Convention Bureau. The other forty-eight percent available for the city's use. I would give a shout-out to Parks and Rec for all the events they've got, and for those people who brought events back. Beach Bash was back, War on the Shore. We've got, the Snow Fest came back. So all these things are bringing people to Two Rivers, whether it be day trippers or spending the night or spending the week. It's all helping. So continue to do good things. We'll continue to promote it and hopefully continue to see these numbers fly. By the way, this is increasing at a much faster rate than our, our neighbor to the, to the south. And, you know, the, the, the river trails, the bike trails, bike and ped trails the council has seen fit to reinvest in, the beach, which just gets better. All of those things together really showing some results.
I'd like to add a comment to what Kurt just said. I think it's really important, particularly short-term rentals are really booming, and that's where the internet provides a beautiful opportunity for people from way outside a community to come to Two Rivers. And because of what you said, Kurt, and because of the events that we're doing as a community, they're coming to Two Rivers. And our percentages are greatly increased. They got the new hotel coming, and it's, as Kurt said, much higher, faster rate than our sister south. It's a co-member of our Tourism Board.
I mean, you look at that gold bar through the first, those gold bars through the first six months, and in every single month, the, and again, we're, we're not a tourism mecca. We're not the Dells yet. We don't aspire to be that. But, but that's a pretty profound change month over month.
Do you have the number handy on the page views on Explore Two Rivers?
I've got that coming up.
Okay.
I don't know offhand, and I don't understand it fully as I look at it, but we do have it coming up. Also, and I know Dave Buss, our Finance Director, shared some on this two weeks ago when I was not here. But again, I, I would crow about this. We talked about it briefly during the audit report, and you'll see a nice chart in the Management Discussion and Analysis part of the audit report on our equalized value history. But again, the, the Wisconsin Department of Revenue each year comes out with equalized valuations for towns, villages, cities, counties, and statewide across the state of Wisconsin based on new construction activity in the prior year and based on market activity as they track sales of various classes of properties. And we've been through some rough years, starting with the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine recession, and then the departure of Hamilton right after that. We saw our equalized value go into a down cycle. We've, are now in the fourth year of an up cycle, and yes, all over the state, all over the country, you're seeing residential real estate appreciating very nicely. It's kind of nice, though, when we can say that Two Rivers actually, because we've lagged some years, that we actually exceeded what has happened countywide, statewide, and in our neighboring city. The numbers for twenty twenty-one from the Department of Revenue showed the city's total equalized value up seven point nine one percent, or about forty-three million dollars. Only about one percent of that's due to new construction. The rest is market appreciation. But that seven point nine one percent compares to Manitowoc at five point seven two, the county at five point seven nine, and the full state of Wisconsin at six point seven nine. The residential piece of that and residential properties are far and away most of our tax base. Residential valuations in Two Rivers collectively went up nine point six five percent. Manitowoc just shy of eight and a half percent. Countywide, eight point one five. State of Wisconsin, seven point eight five. This means that, you know, our indicators like where are we relative to our state statute-imposed debt limit on city bonded debt, which is expressed in terms of GO debt, general obligation debt, as a percentage of equalized value. When the bottom of that fraction goes up by eight percent, that helps a whole lot. And we went from the high sixties as far as percentage of our state, our, our debt limit to about sixty-two percent. So that, that's a nice improvement. I didn't have Dave print a new table out today, but if you look in the M D N A, or Management Discussion and Analysis in the audit report, you see this sort of U-shaped graph on where our equalized value has been over the past decade or so. And as of the end of twenty twenty, the comment was, well, we're back to where we were in twenty eleven. I just plugged an asterisk in there because, again, I didn't think to do this till about five-thirty today, and could have had Dave do a new table. But right about where that star is, is where our twenty twenty-one equalized value is. And we are, we are at least now back up to where we were, a little higher than where we were in two thousand and nine when that decline commenced. So here's hoping that continues to be the case. But the, the trend line looking very positive there. Some, some of the new employees you met earlier, and thanks to the department has, and to Jamie, our city clerk and human resources officer for their contributions there. Lot of, lot of work behind the scenes in recruitment, interviews, selection, background checks, reference checks, reflected in all of those new hires. We thank, as Kurt mentioned, and these are not all of the recent events, but it's too bad we had the weather we did the first weekend in August because there were some really enthusiastic people from the Catamaran Racing Association of Wisconsin back here for the second year in a row at the beach. Phenomenal turnout of teams for War on the Shore, back to Two Rivers. Thank you, Adam, and the other organizers. Great to see. This past week, this past weekend, the weather was magic, and it was wonderful for Rogers Street Days, beach traffic. People would have, would have given good money to have had that weather the first weekend in August. But again, it's shaping up to be a great summer and, and into the fall. Few things that are coming up. Clipper City Chordsman, including our Finance Director among them, oh, Dave disappeared, I think, will be in Central Park this Thursday, the nineteenth, the Chordsman from six to eight. E T will be the next movie on the beach this Friday. Who doesn't love E T? This Friday, August twentieth, eight-thirty, which is sadly past dark these days at Neshota Beach. Next week, Sunday, the Honey Goats down at Neshota with bands on the beach and beverages served by our local Rotary Club. And then the following weekend, I'm sorry, no, the twenty-fifth, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, W R T R Celebration. This is organized by our recently retired Two Rivers Superintendent Lisa Quistorf. Opportunity for the community to bid a fond farewell to Lisa and extend hello and, and welcome to the new superintendent of Two Rivers Public Schools, Diane Johnson. So folks are encouraged to bring a cooler with snacks and refresh, refreshments and enjoy the acoustic tunes of Kepke and La Force. Visit with friends and neighbors. An upcoming event also is Celebrate Two Rivers, Saturday, the twenty-eighth, from three to about eleven over at Walsh Field, with music, fireworks, food trucks, special events for the kids. Second annual Celebrate Two Rivers. Related to all of those events, traffic is trending up on the Explore Two Rivers website, the weekend of Beach Bash or thereabouts. And by the way, these, these dates are kind, kind of European-looking. That's the period, August twelfth to August fourteen. It threw me for a minute there. But we were seeing forty-three point seven average daily clicks. Went up from three point two to forty-three point seven. That was largely driven by War on the Shore activity, Lisa tells me. And then the period from eight, eleven, August eleventh to August thirteen, possible, or the average daily clicks, thirty-seven point seven. So we're seeing solid use of the events page. And that's something we need to keep boosting because I commented to somebody, I, I saw the entire donut case wiped out by nine in the morning on Saturday of War on the Shore, and something tells me we still need to get the word out to some of our businesses. So their donut cases are full when the city manager saunters through at about nine o'clock, and looks like the army has visited the bakery section at Quick Trip at least. So with that, tonight, we'll again discuss the Central Park West three sixty-five project. The council agenda does have a budget amendment that would formally allow for the spending of dollars this year to complete the design work, which council two weeks ago indicated support for proceeding with. I would note that since the last regular meeting, I have submitted one major grant application to the West Foundation for consideration later this month at their meeting to assist that project. And we're exploring, pursuing other funding options as well. I was honored last week when the Municipal Electric Utilities of Wisconsin met in Manitowoc to, for their annual conference to be one of two local leaders presented with M E W's Philip La Follette Public Official Award. This is to recognize folks that over their careers have supported and promoted public power in Wisconsin, and I thank our Electric Utility Director, Brian Delman, for his nomination. Ken Kozak, our retired director, was there as well, receiving his retirement award from the Municipal Electric Utilities. Great group of people, and here in Two Rivers, we've been, been happy to be a public power community and to have participated in lobbying at the state level and in, in their D C legislative rallies and lobbying as well over the years. They're very effective also in terms of providing our joint safety program that we participate in. We have a, roughly a third of a safety director position that isn't just benefiting our electric utility, but serves all of our city departments, joint purchasing programs, joint policy initiatives of M E W. Also, got to sit at the luncheon last Thursday at the same table as Anita Galucci from the Boardman Law Firm. Anita's retiring later this year, but for thirty-plus years, she's been the go-to person on a lot of public power issues in Wisconsin, and we got to meet her, her successor at the Boardman Firm. Just would like to suggest council members might want to mark their calendars. You'll be getting invites shortly, but the ribbon cutting for the Point Beach Solar Project will be on Thursday, September twenty-third, at ten A M. Out, out in the town of Two Creeks. Again, Point Beach Solar is a hundred-megawatt solar project that is being constructed by Nextera, the owners and operators of the Point Beach Nuclear Plant, but it is based on a twenty-year purchase power contract with the city's wholesale energy supplier, W P P I Energy. They're inviting people in from around the state, although that also is Ryder Cup week, so we've, they have found there are no accommodations to be found anywhere in this corner of the state. But you'll be getting invites on that. I would add, too, during the construction phase, this has been another driver of our room tax revenues because those contractors have pumped a lot of money into this community at both the Point Beach and Two Creeks projects.
Ed signify any completion of construction, Greg?
I believe, Brian, they hope to be powering up at that point. October, so they'll be on the verge of it. Yep. The, we, under communications, some council members may have, have heard from folks or seen some social media traffic about a new five G antenna installation on Forest Ave at Twenty-ninth Street that is, has been properly permitted through the electric utility. We do want to discuss at the next work, work session a model ordinance for Wisconsin Utilities about placement of five G antennas, but my understanding of it, this, this installation is basically, falls within, falls within the requirements or what, what communities basically have to allow under existing federal and state legislation that has been passed to facilitate five G's deployment. But we know that that is a concern. There's a, there's some, some concerns out there about the new technology, and we'll be addressing that at least initially at the next work session. Adam?
What does that permit go through?
That goes through the electric utilities essentially for placement on poles within the public right-of-way.
Okay, so that goes through Brian, I assume?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. And that, that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Tourism, you had that listed, too?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, under Legislative and Governmental Update. We didn't have a slide on that. But we did have a meeting here for, oh, gosh, it extended to about three hours last Friday morning. Council President Andrews, myself, City Attorney Bruce, also some citizen representatives, Gina Cron from Sepia Chapel, who the city had invited to participate as someone active in the tourism area, met with representatives from the Manitowoc Area Visitor Convention Bureau Board, not a quorum of their board, but three or four members of their board, and our counterparts from the city of Manitowoc, Mayor Nichols, City Attorney Kathleen McDaniel, Eric Sikowitz from City Council, who's also on their Room Tax Commission, to talk about a successor to the current Tourism Services Agreement. I think we made a fair amount of progress at that meeting toward a successor. We need to, we are supposed to be receiving a new draft agreement from Attorney McDaniel in Manitowoc. And at that time, when we have it in hand, I'd like to get a meeting of our Room Tax Commission scheduled. I'm not going to say that it's been a, it's been a harmonious process along the way, but what was discussed last week, I think, lays the foundation for continuing and building on our tourism cooperation rather than seeing it come to an end.
I'll add, there were two other representatives that we had from the M A V C B Board that are, represent Two Rivers. Jim Van Landon was there at the meeting, and Barry Cron was also there. Both of them are on the M A V C B Board. They also had representatives from Manitowoc on the M A V C Board there as well as the three that Greg mentioned.
The Director of the Farm Discovery Center and, I'm sorry. Right, the director of the Farm Discovery Center and, I'm sorry, I'm going blank, but some other representatives. That agreement is ultimately a decision to be made, is, is in the purview of the Room Tax Commission. But I do want, if we're in a position by the, by the work session, which we should be, to review the proposed agreement, I'd, I'd like to have that discussion. I expect Kurt would as well. Adam?
Sorry, one more question about that 5G because I did get questioned about it and I want to respond accordingly.
Yep.
What street was that on? That's why I think I missed the numbers.
Tell me, Brian, I believe it's Forest at 29th.
29th and Forest.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to quickly brief city council and the residents of Two Rivers in regards to the dredging bill. And Bill Leclair and I went down, what was it, last week? Okay, last week, Wednesday, down to Madison. And we addressed our legislators in regards to Assembly Bill 99. And later this month, we'll be going down to address legislators for Senate Bill 93, which is on the same subject, it just has to go through both, both entities. We've been with, with Greg, we've been, well, with Shay Sortwell and Andre Jacques. This was our third visit down there and we actually started this process back in 2018. So it's been a long process and there's, there was a little bit of friction between the DNR and the authors of the bill and the way it was originally written. All of that has been ironed out pretty much. And right now, and this is, this has become very bipartisan. There's a lot of support for what we want to do with basically the spoils of dredging, you know, instead of loading them onto trucks, trucking them, you know, out to a landfill and the amount of money that is wasted on that. And instead be allowed, just like the Corps, the U.S. Corps of Army Engineers, to put that sand out on the beach and have beach nourishment and to, you know, to extend our beaches. And I think everybody remembers the beach that magically appeared last year. That was from the Corps of Engineers. We want to be able, as a city, we want to be able to do the same thing. And right now, from both sides of the aisle, everyone is cautiously optimistic. The DNR is on board. This has been a long haul and Andre Jacques and Shay Sortwell have done a fantastic job. And so Bill and I addressed them. And I think that, and I know that they've really, really listened. And actually, I was surprised at how quickly a date was set for the Senate. Very encouraging. So I just wanted to let everyone know that if, if everything goes right and, but it's politics, so who knows what's going to happen. But there's a, a chance that, that we can see this come to fruition this year. And then the next time we have to dredge, we're not going to be wasting a ton of money on, on something so ridiculous. So just wanted to let everybody know that we've made progress.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Bill, for going down.
Yeah, we appreciate your efforts. As I recall, that was around $700,000 additional cost. It cost the city to remove that sand from the river to a landfill. And that was a big expense for us versus what happened federally. We saw appearance of a new beach. So thank you for that.
Our pleasure.
Anything else? Thank you, Darla. I apologize for not putting that on the agenda, but very important and thanks for representing the city very well on that. Yeah.
Nothing else, we'll move on to number 10, the consent agenda. We've got a presentation of minutes, regular council meeting minutes from August 2nd, a motion to waive those readings and adopt those minutes. On B, we got application and petition. We have two different ones, Friends of Two Rivers Senior Center and the Two Rivers Rotary Foundation. So a motion to approve the applications and authorize the issuance of those license. On reports or minutes of meetings, we have six of those. On department reports, we have 11 different department reports. And a recommended action there is a motion to receive those and file them. Last but not least, a summary of verified bills for the month of July 2021 of $1,533,596 and 85 cents. A motion to receive and place that on file as well. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Do I have a motion?
The motion to approve the consent agenda with the various recommended actions.
Thank you, Mark. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any discussion regarding these?
President?
Yes, Mark.
A lot of times the public doesn't get to see these and the department's put a lot of work into it. But I do have two quick questions. First, for our fire chief, it's amazing, I drive by it all the time at station. This year, already through July, 1,194 incidents has occurred, of which 1,085 were EMS. And I just wondered, EMS seems to be a growing percentage. And I wanted to ask chief, why is that? Is there anything we can learn from that to benefit the community or what, why does that happen?
I believe there's a couple of reasons why the EMS calls continue to grow. One, people are, are getting older. Along with that age comes more care, things like that. The transports are definitely up. Aurora keeps us in business where we take a lot of their patients to neighboring facilities for additional care, different types of care that they don't necessarily provide at these. We also actually take patients back from the hospitals to nursing homes and things like that, making sure that we provide that well-rounded care for our residents and, and trying to meet those needs. As for trying to, trying to stay safe or, or things along that nature, I know last year, the, the numbers were down a little bit from COVID. Seems that during that time, a lot of people were, you know, that was during the lockdowns and things like that where people were staying home and they weren't out commingling and things like that. So there were, actually was a significant reduction of calls from a few years prior. It seems like we're actually up back again to where we were normally.
Second question I have for chief is, all this comes with a cost and I see that we, collection rate, we're running slightly behind last year to date. Our collection rate's falling. Is that a factor in the budget?
Not, not so much for the concerns of it. We do keep very tight tabs on it. We do actually pursue the billing through the TRIP program, which is Tax Revenue Intercept Program, where if somebody doesn't pay their bill, whether it's through health insurance or through paying private pay, however they need to do it, we actually attach it to their tax bill and then we, we receive our, our monies that way. There's a substantial amount of money that's out there and waiting. As the council, I'm sure, is very well aware of is a lot of people were out of work at that time during last year. So a lot of people are getting caught up with that, not only through health insurance, but through other avenues that way. And some of them just don't have the means to provide for that as of yet. So we are, we are actively seeking it and we, we do keep very tight tabs on it.
Thank you. Any other questions about the consent agenda or any discussion?
If I could, one more question, a quick.
Yes, Mark.
Just a positive, Greg, you're talking, we saw the audit report. I just want to tell you that in the report, I see that there's building value of almost $3 million already year to date that has gone through inspections. A positive trend. Two Rivers.
Thank you. So all in favor of approving the motion and the second that was on the table, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Let's move to number 11, City Council Formal Items. Tonight, we have a resolution amending the 2021 Parks and Recreation Capital Budget to provide funding for the design services for Central Park West 365 project. That's in your package. If you haven't got that, it's in there. There's two different pieces of paper. One actually goes through and shows you the adjustment in the budget. And the second one shows you the recap of what we discussed at the last session where the design leased was recommended by the committee and approved. The budget now has to be approved. So first of all, I'm looking for a motion to waive the reading and adopt that resolution. Then we'll get into some of the discussion. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Darla. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Kurt.
Thank you, Bill. Let's go to any discussion we have of the document in front of us. Greg, do you want to set this up first?
Again, I, I just wanted to point out, and that was why I provided a copy of the July 30 memo that you had in front of you two weeks ago. That was just a handout tonight. This is, this requested amendment is entirely consistent with prior actions of the council on this project, including your July 26 work session where the council approved a motion to express the city's intent to move forward with the project, consistent with the concept plan, direct the city manager to provide funding for a third of the estimated total cost. That total cost, if the full project is done, being $1.8 million, a third of it being $600,000 in the 2022 capital budget. Get a proposal from our architectural planning firm for final design services to take it through final design and up to bid-ready documents. Affirm that the committee, Citizen Committee, has been working on this since January, would continue to work on it and likewise further direct some issues like addressing the loss of several on-street parking spaces associated with the proposed closure of the street. Last meeting, the council, upon receiving a copy of the proposal from the architect for full design services, did approve a motion to allow, that, to authorize the city manager and clerk to enter into a contract for design services with certain understandings as to how the billings would be structured, with the understanding that funds for the design work would be advanced from the general fund for this year to be reimbursed from proceeds of borrowing for capital projects next year out of that $600,000 that was addressed at the earlier meeting. It was pointed out to me in follow-up to that meeting by a council member, quite correctly, that this, this authorization to go forward would also need to include a budget amendment because we are talking about spending money this year that was not specifically budgeted for this year. There was 30,000 budgeted for the preliminary plan work on a splash pad and a skating rink somewhere. And that has developed into a committee recommendation for the project as, as we know it. So that is why you have this budget amendment resolution in front of you. It frankly is intended to comply legally with what the council approved two weeks ago. It does, any budget amendment does require a two-thirds vote, so that would be an affirmative vote of six of the nine members of this body. I'm, I'm just going to make a bit of a pitch here. I know there are some concerns that maybe this project has seen some mission creep and it's, has grown in scope beyond just a skating rink and a splash pad. That's true. The committee recognized, the designer presented designs that pretty much affirmed to the committee that they, they thought these facilities would make the most sense in the context of upgrading Central Park West. It's more than just a parks and rec project. I'd like to think it really could be an economic development project, a transformative project for the downtown. We are intending, assuming council gives this blessing, to aggressively pursue funding. And if at the end of the day, a city taxpayer contribution of 600,000 doesn't leverage 1.2 million for everything else, well, then where designs can be changed, elements can be deferred. You might remember at the work session, when Blake Tyson, the, the designer, his quick answer, what could be deferred? Well, the restroom building. Now, you'd still need to house the mechanical controls, electric controls for the splash pad somewhere, but that restroom and concession building, which I think most people thought is nice, would, could be a great addition. That building, inclusive of 10% contingency, is about half a million dollars. So what I'm trying to say is, as this proceeds, there are some course adjustments that inevitably will be made that will either make it happen within the budget that's been identified or a lower budget. But frankly, without proceeding with design, we cannot represent, we'll be in a position to build it next summer if all goes well. And we can't really answer all the questions that relate to fundraising. So I, I'll be quiet now, but I would encourage the council, consistent with the vote two weeks ago, to, to approve this budget amendment, which in the proper legal form does exactly what the council's expressed intent was two weeks ago tonight. Thank you.
Mark, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. First of all, it doesn't mean if we approve this, the final project's going to move forward because there still could be some changes. It's approving the ability to design it and then come back and.
Absolutely. And we've got a good committee with two council members on it that's overseeing that process.
And the other point I want to make is, the element of that design is a necessary part for us to get external funding from agencies that we're going to. So without a design, we don't know if we get the money available from the agency to support this, which could generate in excess of a third to 40% of the total cost of the project plays out. So it's, to me, it's a critical step forward.
You say agency, Mark, you're referring to the grant applications?
The grant money from outside.
Okay, thank you. I just want to clarify that.
Grant money from outside agencies, okay?
Darla?
When might we start having this conversation as far as changes that we might want to entertain with the design?
I would say as soon as we have a signed contract with the designer to take it into the next phase. And I'm looking to schedule a committee meeting within two weeks if we can. Yeah. And again, I, I guess, and it's the council's call, but this is, this is an ambitious, forward-looking project. And it would be at 1.4 million versus 1.8. But I, I just, I'd also say it's a once-in-a-lifetime thing and I'd be hesitant, would urge you to be hesitant about pulling in our horns before we know what we might be able to access in terms of outside funding.
Well, that's true. I mean.
I'm sorry.
You know, I mean, if we can, through fundraising, be able to comfortably afford, you know, because like to Adam's credit, he had brought up the fact that, you know, that this has changed, you know, the, the project has changed substantially since our initial conversations. And I, I can't help but think that there can be some, some fat trimmed and reduce the cost and still have a really fantastic park with all the amenities that, that we're discussing.
I know. I, I agree with you entirely. And I, I would just offer, sitting in this chair for other projects that come to mind, I'd much rather come in with a healthy cost estimate.
Oh, absolutely.
And deliver a lower cost than be going the other way because it's painful for all of us when it, when it's going the other way.
Yeah, it makes sense to do it in that fashion, sure.
Adam, your hand up, or fingers up anyway.
Yeah, obviously, I'm really struggling with the, the design up to this point of the project and the cost of that. We've really gotten a very small splash pad, a very big ice rink, and then we've added in the expensive bathrooms and the, and the stage. All things that probably need to get done, but not to the tune of 1.7. And I guess I don't want to spend $116,000 to a plan that I think is way more expensive than what we need. And then if this doesn't come to fruition next year, the year after, and we lose momentum, because it is a very expensive project, we got $116,000 out of our budget that we're spending for design that we may have to revisit again. And I guess that bothers me. And I guess the whole scope of the project thus far kind of bothers me. Like I said, I think the splash pad's gotten real small, the rink's gotten real big, we lose the street, we have concerns with the, chief does, with the, with the Y-turns, trying to get out of there because you're not going to be able to make a full U-turn. So I mean, there's a lot of things in this project that just aren't headed in the right direction, in my opinion.
Bonnie?
I just was wondering, because this is an amended budget for this year, so where is this 116,000 coming from?
Well, we, we would basically, like, and I would say like we have on many projects in the past, floating that cost out of this year's budget. Now, as far as the cash flow part of it, there's a contribution from Mr. Totti, which I wouldn't propose we say, "Thank you, your memorial contribution to architectural fees." But that, I think the council has at least given some preliminary indication you'd like to apply to this. But the thought would be, you got to do the design before you can bid the project. The city from available fund balance would fund the work. And then next year, when we do our capital projects borrowing, out of that $600,000, you didn't sign off on that as a budget matter, but the two meetings back, you said, "Work to include in next year's budget, 600,000 or a third of this estimated project cost." We would refund it. I'd remind council, engineering, planning, and architectural fees are. I'd remind council, engineering, planning, and architectural fees are, are all by statute items that can be paid for with borrowing after the fact. You don't go build something and then try to borrow for it a year after you've spent the money, but it's, it's certainly legitimate to do that. We've done it on other projects I can think of, probably more in the, like, water and wastewater realm, where, you know, the engineering work gets done, the city advances the funds to cover those costs, and then it's recouped out of the project financing.
Carla?
I think it, it's prudent to go for the gold, just because, you know, so that we know we have it, for whatever amount, you know, the project ends up being, I'm hoping it's going to be less. And the thing is, just because we, you know, have that available, doesn't mean that we have to spend it. And I was really hesitant, I was confused to a certain point when we voted on this the other evening, because it seemed, and I, and it was explained a couple times, that we were just voting on going forward with the design. The way it was worded, it was almost, it made me feel like, well, are we voting on the, the final design and passing it? And we're not. So, and the thing is, I think we're going to have a really good discussion as far as final design, cost, and, you know, because to actually go forward with all of this, it's going to have to have buy-in from city council, but that's going to be our golden opportunity. And for tonight, to go ahead with this, it's just a formality, but it makes, it makes sense to, to go for that higher amount, and if we don't spend all of it, or if we have enough donations or sponsorships to cover quite a bit of the cost, that would be fantastic. And I think we have an opportunity to really, to really get that, that purse built up. So that's just basically what that is, but there's still, you know, ample opportunity for us to get our, our thoughts in there and our suggestions, but I think it's a worthwhile project, definitely, but I've got concerns as well.
Any more discussion? Jeff?
Kind of with Adam on this, I've talked to a lot of people about this now, everybody is upset about the cost. Everybody that I talk to, and I've talked to, I'll bet you 50, 60 people about it, and they all are upset about the cost, and understandably so.
Upset about what the gross number's going to be?
Yeah.
Because you don't know what the net number to the city's going to be yet, because of Darla's earlier point, you're going to ask for donations and help. What if you got 1.8 million dollars in donations and grants? Then would they be upset? I don't think so. But anyway, that's, my thinking is, they don't know what we're going to get yet, and our job is to minimize as much money as possible for the cities, citizens to have to spend out of their taxpayer money. I would agree with you. If it was 1.8, we are funding that?
Right.
I think we'd be passing on this one right now. Mark? Thank you though for your comment.
People I've talked to, and, and my personal view is, I'm focused on the benefit, first of all, the benefit of what it could do to the community, and I've seen the positives. Final cost is a component of what Darla said and Greg you've said, we can always tweak that, we're not voting on the total cost of the package if we want one more parking lot, or we want a smaller bandstand. We can reduce, still can do that. This is the element that we need, amendment, to adjust the budget to get the design, and I'll repeat what I said in the beginning, without a design, we can't submit it to our biggest opportunity to get money to help fund this whole thing, which this could bring. If we don't get the funding, I, you know, we have to reconsider it, but if we get the opportunity of donation, which the design's required to be submitted with, then we can move forward. We can always tweak the end of what the total cost is, but that's what we're doing now.
I think 101, $141,000 is a tough pill to swallow for design of a project that you may not feel comfortable with, and I'm coming from my point of view again. I, I don't feel comfortable with the project, I don't feel comfortable spending $141,000 to, to go forward and designing something that I don't really feel comfortable with. Um, I don't think, I mean, we can be ambitious, but I don't think raising 1.8 million dollars, especially not in a year, that, that's a, that's a tough goal right there.
I think.
So a lot of that's going to come back to, to city council to, to chew up some of that at some point. I mean, we're already talking that possibly 600,000 for that.
Bonnie?
I have a question, can you use room tax money towards some of this?
Potentially could, I can honestly say we don't, yeah, we don't have any kicking around, right, any excess kicking around right now, but I think a case could be made for that. I do.
It, it all has to be tied, Bonnie, to tourism, so if you haven't improved downtown with splash pad, it may qualify for some dollars to be allocated against that.
You know, I, I don't just offer, I don't dispute it, you know, if you hit anybody cold, what do you think about spending 1.8 million on the west side of Central Park? I, doesn't, you know, the immediate reaction would be, no, I don't, that sounds like, it is a lot of money, you know, 1.2 million for a fire ladder track, totally different thing, but has shock value to people. But then, when you say, well, you know, you're adding a splash pad, you're adding an outdoor skating area, how about that bandstand which dates back to the 1980s? Does that need replacing? You do some infrastructure work that's part of it, it's part of its tree planting, we have a tree planting budget. I'm not saying it's, it's magic, but unless the council wants to be aspirational on this and feels that the importance of reinforcing the central place in the downtown, consistent with what this committee has recommended, is, is worthwhile and worth going for, without the full-throated support of the council, we're, we're handicapped right from the get-go. And I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, there is the ability to pull back and, you know, if, if things don't pan out, and I hate to keep putting things that way, but if they don't, well then, half a million dollars' worth of concession stand and restroom building, which there are plans for that could be resurrected at a later time or with later funding opportunities, probably goes away. But do you at least lay out the plans for the full park, be in a position to respond if, if the funding responses are all favorable? That's your call, that's why we're here tonight, that's why we were here with the same question two weeks ago.
Carla?
I just want to make sure that, that we don't lose sight of how this is going to benefit our downtown. I had a conversation with Nate Kronforst, who, I, I come to find out that Schrader's experience is what I experience over at the art gallery, and what some of the other small businesses on Washington Street experience, and that's, we, we have more of a relationship with visitors to this city than we do with local residents, which is kind of shocking, but I have found that out over the past three years, and to hear Mr. Kronforst echo that on Schrader's behalf was eye-opening. What I'm looking at with this, with this renovation of West Central Park is the fact that it's going to bring local residents downtown again, and perhaps they'll start visiting, you know, they'll shop more locally, and they will show support for local businesses. Getting the people down to this, to, down to our downtown is crucial. If you notice right now, a lot of us are not open in the afternoons, especially on Saturdays, because by about 3, 3:30, it's a ghost town out there. You know, there's been a lot of talk about being open at night, and the foot traffic is just not there at all. And I know that I've been open late, and I just sat there twiddling my thumbs, had nobody come in, saw nobody passing by, and I'm not the only one. It, it's, it's a dire situation. We want to have a vibrant downtown, and right now, we don't do it. So if we can attract more residents downtown, it's only going to help. So I just wanted to make sure we don't lose sight of that.
Our neighbors are doing both, there's a lot of private investment, a lot of public investment going on in downtown Manor to Walk, and it shows, this, this would show.
Tracy? You're on the committee, and Jay, you're on the committee of, that presented this project. I'm just curious to listen, to hear what you both have to say, if you don't mind jumping in.
Well, the way I look at it, you're going to transform that park, adding, do it right, we can do it for less line item, but I think to draw people here to the downtown area, and that includes development along your river for residential, you're going to want those people to have someplace to go. I've been spending a lot of time in downtown Manor to Walk, hitting up every restaurant that's there, looking in the shops, talking to the shop people, they have a lot of growth in that downtown, and we need to do that here. And if all we do is bring some of those folks from Manor to Walk over here for dinner and shopping, you need, you want to get residential up and through here, you were talking about that the other night, you're going to need to have them really want to be down here because they think there's something happening.
Jay, do you want to add your, you've been doing a lot of committee work on this, so just curious.
Well, when I first started out, I liked the project, I thought it would be great to have a splash pad and a ice skating rink in the center of the city. It kind of grew really quick here, got really expensive, so I'm kind of on the fence, you know, I, I like to redo everything like we want, like the first plan was, you know, but at the same time, I'm looking at dollars and cents, we're coming out of COVID, a lot of people have been laid off, a lot of people have been hurting, I don't know if the money will be there to help us out, I don't know. We all don't know, I guess, but, kind of torn, torn between a rock and a hard spot here.
Again, the design is to understand the expense, so Mark, thank you though for your feedback. Mark, you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I, I just, again, I appreciate all the concerns, but we're not voting on the final number, 1.8, that's the big ticket, we're not voting on that. We're voting on the plan that could get us sizable contributions to support this plan. We don't get the donations or the free money from the grant that we're looking at, we're not even going to pursue the 1.8. The 1.8, we can always tweak down, but what we're doing is we're approving the plan, and the numbers mean it's 116,000 additional dollars, the budget, not 175, or 141, 116 additional, and great, there's the 45 from Totti that's out there, we haven't applied that anywhere yet, so that could only mean we're talking about 71 additional, right? And I think Jim would love to see that plan.
That would be at the council's discretion.
I would not recommend that, I mean, what if this project doesn't go through? Where are you going, where are you going to post his name? You, you can't put that 43 to that, not to the design of it. If we don't raise money, what are we going to do, hang a plaque, say, "Thanks for, thanks for the design work"?
Separate conversation on how we're going to use Mr. Totti's donations.
There are, there are other options rather than.
Okay? That, that may go towards something else we would have spent money on in another, in another bucket, but I don't disagree with Adam, it's, yes.
I just want to say that we don't have to go, as far as like donations and sponsorships, it just seems like we just keep going back to the same, the same organizations and, you know, and there, yeah, we could go ahead and apply for grants, but I'll tell you, if we think outside the box and be creative with our approach and who we approach, I don't think it's going to be a problem. And the thing is, is that there is, you know, if these organizations do sponsor and they do donate, they're getting something out of it too, and I'm not going to go into that, but it, it can be very beneficial for them, and I think that, and I, I believe that a lot of organizations would want to be involved, so I think it's totally doable, but that's being creative and thinking outside the box.
We'll go back to the motion, the second on the table is to approve the $116,000 added adjustment to the budget for this year to get the design done, so we can look at the total dollars. Greg, one more comment?
Just one additional comment, if I might, you know, that, I was just going to point out, it's, it's an additional spend of 116, Adam's correct when he mentioned earlier, the 141, 20 of that was for the preliminary planning, when we started this, five is for our park and open space plan update that's just starting. The fact is, even if we go back to the idea of building a splash pad, maybe a larger splash pad, and skating area, there's going to be a design cost to that. I'm, I'm going to take a wild guess and say that might easily be 50 out of the 116. At the margin here, the difference between the, the bare minimum that we went into this for and an aspirational plan that would become fully developed, that we could try to sell to funding agencies and donors, is about 60, 65,000. This isn't committing the city to spending 1.8 million, and on, on the margin, it's about, again, a $60,000 additional spend to get the plans done. Given the potential benefit of the project as a transformational project, it just strikes me as worthy of, worthy of your investment. I'd.
You have the chief coming for a little bit of water.
Mr. President, you know.
We can't go after it if we're half-hearted about it, we might as well just hang it up.
The splash pad, we keep, we're diminishing what, we're talking about light sprinkler two that cracks a vibrant new addition to a darkened downtown, right? We're talking about ice skating, but guys, it's a year-round ice skating, who can tell me, if you want to ice skate in August, where do you go? Outside? Who does, what city has that? Huh? To me, that, well, let me finish, to me, that brings more, maybe open businesses that are closed, people want to live downtown, opportunity here, it's vibrant, and the young people have things to do.
If we're, if we're talking about an ice skating rink and a splash pad, that's probably going to cost about $600,000, and the design, as Mr. Buckley just stated, that would cost probably about $50,000, yeah, I'd feel a heck of a lot more comfortable trying to raise $600,000 and spending $50,000 of the city's money knowing we're going to get it. Spending 141,000 right now, voting on 116, 141 total, but 116 right now on a 1.8 million doesn't make me feel confident we're spending the money the right way.
Jeff? Thank you.
The whole project started out so simple, it was supposed to be ice skating rink, splash pad, it should have been simple to do it, turned into a pet project somehow. I don't understand how that happened. It just grew too big. It's going to be too hard, so.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's do this, we're going to go round and round, and I'm going to make a recommendation that we do a roll call vote, what we're trying to do is you got to get two, how many, do you have to get two-thirds?
Six votes.
Six votes out of nine that have to approve the spending of the $116,000 to get the design. If it doesn't pass, this, this project's not going to pass at all. Am I stating the obvious?
I have, I'm, I'm not going to, we're, we're dead in the water at that point. I, I certainly don't see us proceeding with fundraising or anything, I'm not, I'm not sure. I see some, some fairly clumsy effect, attempts would, would probably do to get back together and figure something out, but we're losing time, we're losing opportunities, I've got an, I've got a major application out where we said, "This is a very important project, by the way," and that was based on its blessing two weeks ago, that the city is behind. I'm not sure what to say.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm just, I'm just stating the obvious.
Other than.
It could, may not pass, so.
Have, have hope and, and shoot for doing it right.
So two-thirds of the nine votes is what you need, six of them, right?
Correct.
Okay. So Jamie, you're going to do a roll call vote?
Right, Jeff Dalkey.
No.
Tracy Coach.
Yes.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Oh.
Bonnie Shamilunas.
I.
Adam Mosky.
No.
Kurt Andrews.
I'm recusing myself.
Mark Bittner.
Yes.
At a 5-3.
Motion fails due to the lack of a sufficient majority. We are absent more discussion, we are going absolutely nowhere on this.
Okay. Still, we'll have to have a conversation to the Project 365 Committee and let them know that it's not going to move forward.
Right, well, it ain't moving forward from tonight.
Okay. So let's move on to the B, which is an ordinance amending the municipal code Title IX, Chapter IX, Section III of the city ordinance pertaining to place of domicile for certain sex offenders. I'm looking for a motion to waive the reading and adopt that ordinance first, and we'll get into motion in second, and then we'll have the chief walk us through a little bit more of that ordinance that he's been working on. a little bit more of that ordinance that he's been working on. So do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Adam, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And Chief, if you'd like to come up, and I think it's number seven, page number 77, 77, 78, all the way through 83 in your package or in your electronic. It talks about this sexual offenders residence restrictions and what we're recommending. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. So as Council President mentioned, you have a number of things in your packet. You should have a memo that outlines, has bullet points that outlines the changes, the ordinance, the ordinance itself with the areas to be changed in yellow. There are some strike-through and some underline. And then you also have, or should have, a reference sheet that has a number of, quite a few actually, statute numbers on it and definition. Because there are a number of statutes that are referenced in this ordinance, I thought it would be good to have those there so that if anybody had a question of what the heck are all these statutes and what is this definition by statute, you have it there as reference. So just kind of outline what you have in your packet and where you can find the information. So as the memo indicates, the sex offender ordinance has been in place since 2015. We had enacted it along with a number of other communities, particularly Manitowoc and other jurisdictions within Manitowoc County to be consistent. Throughout those years, Manitowoc has made some modest changes to their ordinance, some of which, or all of which really we have included in ours, but we've, we've gone a bit further. To kind of go through them one by one, but not, you know, to reiterate everything that you have in front of you. First point would be is adding a term designated, designated offender. And this term comes out of statute 301.45, which kind of identifies who has to be on the sex offender registry. And we felt that this was a better definition to encompass the sex offenders that we would be concerned about in our community and want to have restrictions on, from a residence perspective. It does expand what was there in the previous ordinance. So in the previous ordinance, if you look at the language, it pretty much focused on children only. And obviously, we're concerned about sexual assault against children, but we're also concerned about sexual assault against others too. And so this definition allows to expand upon that, not just include children. I would also mention that I have a couple of others here as reference to kind of help out if you have specific questions. Of course, Assistant Chief Minert, he helped in this process. And then we have Detective Lieutenant Wiesner, who deals more directly with our sex offender population and the sex offender, the Department of Corrections and so forth. Moving on, and please feel free, if you want to jump in at any point in any of these bullet points, to jump in and ask any questions, and I'll address them. Increasing the previous residency timeframe from two to five years, this is what our, our neighbor to the south has done already to match a little local jurisdictions. And that the establishment of the residency, that there couldn't be a time gap of 10 years. So the current ordinance was a little unclear as to whether or not you could move into the city of Two Rivers had you been a resident here at any point in time in your life, or whether it was right when you committed the violation. And so this kind of clarifies that section to indicate that, first off, make it simple, is that you'd had to have residency for five years prior to your offense, not two years, and that if you had lapse of residency in the city of Two Rivers, that'd have to be a 10-year, less than a 10-year period of time. So to give you an example, if you were a child growing up in Two Rivers and you, you know, left home at, at age 18 and, and moved out of town and you were gone for the next 20 years and you decided, at age 40, after committing a sex offense, and now you want to move back to the city of Two Rivers, that would not be permissible to do that because more than 10 years has elapsed since you had resided here. Moving on to the next, adding that no supervised or unsupervised release of a designated offender shall be established in the city for permanent or temporary residence. This was brought to the council actually several months ago when we talked about making these changes, is that we have experienced throughout the early parts of this year where a number of sex offenders were placed at local lodging establishments as an interim or perhaps a somewhat of a fix to try and find them residences within this jurisdiction or even perhaps somewhere else. But it was at the very least a stopping, stopping, a stopping ground or, you know, attempts to have them here temporarily to only find other local residents. So this was meant to address those, to make sure that it was clear in the ordinance, which it was not before, that lodging facilities fall under that residence restriction as well. Yes.
What does it mean when it says domicile? Does that mean at the time? When you're in that same paragraph, unless the offender was...
A domicile is a location where you live.
Okay, I didn't know what that term, but thank you.
It doesn't get used very much anymore nowadays. Yep.
I'd ask the rent. That would require an offender, I believe, to have an ID. President or property owner would. Because the problem was occurring where people were coming without IDs, identification. They had cash. Is that?
Yeah.
How would you cover that?
Yeah, so this ordinance doesn't specifically address the lodging requirements that you're speaking of, but certainly there's an element here that, that element of responsibility on property owners, including managers and lodging, owners of lodging facilities, that they would have an obligation. And so if you're not collecting the names of the individuals that you're renting to, which is required by law, by the way, outside of this ordinance, state law, that you should be doing that. And as, as noted, and I'll kind of touch on that as we get to it, but just to answer your question, there is a section in here that indicates that one of the ways that we would determine whether it's reasonable or not that you should know this person's status is the fact that all it takes is a few clicks on the Wisconsin Department of Corrections website under the sex offender registry to determine if an individual is a sex offender or not. Now, the circumstances that we had talked about a couple of months ago really weren't much of a secret because sometimes those lodging accommodations are actually made by state or local jurisdictions.
Would it impact this ordinance, or would they still be able to do that?
They would not be able to do that. It would have to be by the order of a judge. That would be the only way that it would be exempted.
Thank you.
So moving on, as Councilman Bittner had mentioned, about the renting, leasing, selling property restrictions prohibit property owners from renting or selling of rooms, trailers, apartments, et cetera, for the temporary or permanent residency of offenders. Again, this would probably, once the, once this ordinance is in place, once the words are really, I, I believe that the experience of seeing people at the lodging facilities will probably dramatically reduce. Now we're talking more the prevalence of someone wanting to rent an apartment in town, which would be a completely different kind of proposition because that's, excuse me, generally not done in the middle of the night and for, you know, just one night stay. So those things, there's, should be plenty of time. We always encourage our landlords and others to, you know, check the people that they're renting to. Of course, there are federal laws regarding discrimination that, that are in place, but doing your due diligence and making sure that, you know, you're renting, who you're renting to and that they're fairly reputable individuals, I think is always a good practice. Again, as long as you're staying within state and federal law. So they would have an obligation. And so would the offender, because what we talked about a couple of months ago was, well, we should have it so that the property owners, once if they find out that the person wants to live there and they're a sex offender, that, that the property owner notifies us. Well, you know, and kind of thinking about that, the logic wasn't there when we really kind of examined it and said, well, if a property owner is thinking about renting to a person who's a sex offender, they should be doing that in the first place, so why would they be notifying us? So really, the onus is on the offender, first of all, that they're required to notify potential property owners if they're planning on renting or leasing property of what their status is. And at that point, the property owners should be able to make that determination before they enter into the agreement. So it's not, it's not a situation where we're trying to, you know, back the truck up. It's on the front end of it.
Chief Goldmeyer, I just got a really quick question.
Sure.
That goes along with this.
Yep.
And I apologize if you're going to be addressing it, but...
That's all right.
Are landlords obligated to allow a sex offender to rent from them? Or is it discretionary? I mean, what are the rules for that?
Well, that's, that's exactly what we're deciding on tonight. So we have an ordinance already in place, and there wouldn't be any direct penalty as the ordinance stands right now. There would not be any direct penalty to a property owner in having rented to somebody who was a sex offender and was not allowed to reside in the city. With the changes that we're discussing here tonight, that would change that, that the landlords could be held liable if they did not do their due diligence and they did rent to somebody who was a sex offender and they should have and could have known that they were an offender and were not supposed to be residing here in the city of Two Rivers.
I guess my question is, is there a state statute that says you must, or, you know, you cannot discriminate against a sex offender if they want to rent from you?
I am not aware of a specific state statute regarding that. And of course, we're doing that in this ordinance and...
Right.
And one of the other persons, of course, I've consulted with at great length was Attorney Bruce to make sure that we're not overstepping our bounds in, in what we're doing here.
Okay, all right.
Can you go to the microphone, sir? Thank you.
There are going to be issues with an ordinance like this because there are circumstances where discrimination with respect to tendencies are prohibited by law. There's no case law I know of that would prohibit this sort of a restriction. But it's always possible that an ordinance like this will be challenged on that ground or other grounds by someone. The argument being that it's unconstitutional in certain respects. For example, there's also a provision in here about what's called loitering at certain locations. Loitering has always been subject to litigation for being so vague as to be unenforceable constitutionally. At this point, probably certain provisions of an ordinance like this are untested by the courts, but I, I think that the, the council has the authority in its discretion to adopt provisions, ordinances for public health, safety and welfare. And I think these provisions are defensible legally.
Okay, no, I just wanted that to be crystal clear because that's a huge consideration.
And it can be.
Let me build on Darla's question, if, if I can. If, if it's a responsibility then of the landlord or the hoteler to make sure that they're getting an ID and they're checking, and if they don't, what happens?
So there is a penalty provision in here that allows for a citation to be issued as, as, as a means of punishment, if you will, for the violation. I, I would note, and I, and I know...
What is that amount, if you could tell me, Chief?
So any person found guilty of violating this chapter shall be penalized by forfeiture of not less than $100 and not to exceed $1,000 plus court costs. And then it gets into the, kind of the standard language.
Did we set that up, or how is, how are those ranges established?
That, that range had been established before in the original ordinance because as you see in your, in your paperwork, there has been no change to that section other than the fact that because of other changes, the, the number 996 goes to 997.
So if I'm renting a room for $100 a night to somebody and, ooh, I get caught, I may have a $100 penalty?
So actually, it may or may not be a $100 penalty. That is up to the judge because you, as a council, has established a range. The judge determines, the municipal judge determines what that penalty will be, and in one of two ways. So the one...
I guess I'm challenging the range.
Sure.
Because of the, because, I mean, it's not that, that big a slap on the hands. If I've already got my money from them spending a night or two or three nights there and now I'm going to be fined $100 or $200. Okay, sorry. Is it like a first offense, second offense, third offense? Does it climb up?
It can be.
Okay.
And I...
And we can establish what the minimum could be?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So the judge can do that in two ways. One is, is that this could be what we call a long form to the municipal court. So if there's a violation, we simply give a summons to the person saying, you have to appear in municipal court, be before the judge. If they're found guilty of the offense, the judge could set the fine within the range. The other way, which is typically done for a lot of our violations, is that the judge will beforehand determine a, the fine amount or the range. So the judge may say, for first offense, we're going to say it's $500 because it's within the 100,000. Second offense is 700, third offense is 1,000. And that's just a static amount that all of us know on the front end. And when we issue a citation, it's for, for that amount. So those are the two primary ways.
Thank you. Hold on, Mark, Adam has, Hannah first, Adam?
If that is found to happen, say at a hotel, and you guys go there, you deem it's, it's, they're not supposed to be there.
Yep.
And you set that fine, what happens to the person that's living there?
So...
Or staying the night?
Yeah. So that's where I was going to get to that point right before Council President asked his question. That's all right. So in reality, and how we administer things. So we're not out there to, you know, generate revenue from fines and, and, you know, just be out there writing tickets to everybody. There's a time and a place for that, and it's definitely necessary, and we definitely do that. However, given that circumstance, and we talked about that, what I foresee happening in reality is we find out at eight o'clock at night that somebody at one of our local establishments had rented a room and they were determined to be a sex offender. We would go make contact with them, we'd make contact with the, the manager there, and we would address the issue with them, and we would give that individual to that next morning to vacate. And, and at that point, if there's a continual issue or a continual problem after that, then you can bet that there would be a citation issued. But that would be the reasonable way of doing it. If there was a particular location, for example, and that kind of gets into the, the next ordinance that we'll talk about, but if there was a particular location that repeatedly did this and feigned ignorance, said, you know, because you had 10 first times, there would probably be a citation issued to that individual after the, you know, the second or third time. Be like, hey, you know, we were here last week and, you know, we found out there was a sex offender here and we gave the opportunity for that person to leave, and now we're back here again. Or now we're back here again. At that point, that person should be learning their lesson and it's well past the warning stage.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious because if you kicked him out of that hotel room, where does he go?
Yeah.
Like, does he go to the local park?
Right.
And...
Right.
Is that the thing that we want? And that, that's what I'm trying to get at is, what are we doing with this individual? So you're giving him to the morning to vacate, and then he's got to go someplace, or she has to go find someplace else?
Sure, and Detective Lieutenant Wiesner will add to that.
So I'm usually the one who deals with that. So what I do is I am in close communication with the Department of Corrections. The problem that we had been having with our old ordinance is that they were actually placing the people here. So they didn't have their GPS monitoring on yet either. So I did not want that. I didn't want them being unaccounted for or not knowing where they were staying. So it was just a lot of close communication, working with everybody involved to say, where are you going? And then I would also verify the next place that they were going to make sure that they made it there.
Thanks. But to your point, first offense, second offense, third offense, we can establish, I'm going to say it again, and not that I'm proposing this, but maybe I am. We can establish the fine amount for what the first time is, the second time and the third time. It goes back to, we're not trying to collect money, I'm going to go a record. We're, we're not here to make money off of citations. We're here to deter people from doing bad things. And that's usually what a monetary penalty has with a citation, is a deterrent. So that's the only reason why I keep thinking about, what's that dollar amount? Because it's just trying to get someone to behave and follow the ordinance and do the right thing. Adam?
Sorry, a lot of questions. What happens, because you just brought up the fact that the DOJ dumps people here from time to time. time to time. So under this ordinance, does the state statute oversee our ordinance? So if they dump someone here, who gets slapped with that?
Yeah, so again.
Or how do we correct that if that does happen?
So again, the, the only way that that would happen is if a judge ordered the placement here and that trumps everybody. Yeah. And then just to add on to your, absolutely correct. And, and from, for us as a law enforcement agency, that's an ethical matter. And when it comes to fines and, and so yes, it's to deter offenses, not to generate revenue. And whenever I hear those kinds of revenue and the fines in the same sentence, I try and be very clear about that from an ethical standpoint as a law enforcement entity, that's, that's not, not our intention, our goal.
Thank you. Darla?
So if a landlord or a hotelier is going to do their due diligence, is there some way that you could put an, an index with this ordinance that would kind of just lay out what that process is and who they should contact to, to, to do their due diligence?
Yeah.
As far, you know, just correctly, is it something that you? Or can they just call, you know, your office and?
Yeah, so it does indicate actually in the ordinance that they should notify the chief of police or is her designee. So, so there's that element that's built into here. But to kind of expand upon that, I certainly think it's possible to do a bit more in trying to communicate what our landlords or, or property owners are expected to do or required to do by, by ordinance. So I know that there's some talk with some of the other departments to try and develop, now this is a work in progress, okay? And it's, it's a lot easier maybe said than done. So I just want to be very clear about that, that this isn't a snap your fingers and happen thing. So, but there was some talk about maybe trying to build a database of landlords and property owners and things like that. And that we would have maybe the ability to do a mass communication to that, to that group. And so this would be, I think, an ideal situation where that might apply. But, but at any rate, our intention is to, I've already communicated to the Department of Corrections about this coming before the council tonight. And we would take the additional step if this were to pass tonight to send officers over to our lodging facilities so that they would at least be aware. Okay? And then when, if we get to that point with the communication capability to other landlords and property owners in the community, we could take that next step.
Anything else?
So let's see. I think the last thing which Attorney Bruce had alluded to was they added distance to the loitering section to create further restrictions such as public events, parades, trick-or-treating, or participating in any event wearing seasonal costumes that are reasonably expected to attract children or any events that are child focused. Now, if you actually read the language, that's just a brief, very brief summary of what we're looking at. If you actually read the language, that's where we have to be careful about the loitering and the prowling because those, those ordinance sometimes can run into constitutionality issues. And so we made it very, Jack and I talked about that actually quite a bit and made sure that we didn't cross over that line. I mean, we can't expect that someone who's an offender that is able to reside in town can't attend a parade or can't attend some special event. But if they're doing certain acts or acting in certain ways, which are enumerated in the loitering stat, ordinance, that we could take action at that, at that point. However, there are certain things like trick-or-treating that you would be prohibited from participating in. And, and frankly, if you're under supervision already from the Department of Corrections, you'd be prohibited from doing that anyways.
Any other discussion or questions for the chief? Mark?
If I could, I've got one coming. You're doing it to protect the community, right, as elected official? That's my goal too, is protect the community. We keep talking about penalties for the landlord and other. I worry about the alternative penalty to the community if we don't do it, okay? That's, as elected official, you want to protect the safety of the community, my goal is to support that, period.
I think we'd all agree, Mark.
And I think if you, if you look at, at D really on the first page, it kind of says it all. And we took a lot of the conjecture out of there. The city finds that sex offenders who prey upon others, particularly children, are a serious threat to public safety and is necessary for the city to enact reasonable measures to minimize the risk to the public, of the public in the city falling prey to sex offenders. That, I think, says it all right there.
Okay, if there's any, I'm sorry, there's another question from Jack, our attorney. I'll let, I'll let you speak. You want to clarify something?
It, with respect to Wisconsin's fair housing law, it designates certain protected classes regarding which it's discriminatory to refuse. And that would include things like race, color, family status, disability, sex, marital status, sexual orientation, age. Conviction record isn't among the protected class. So we don't have a situation where a Wisconsin statute expressly says you, you can't discriminate by conviction record. There is federal law prohibiting it with respect to arrest records in certain cases. But though, whenever you deal with a situation where you were imposing penalties on landlords for renting property to certain individuals, there's always the potential there that they're going to say that that's a restriction of their rights, which is unconstitutional in the Constitution or the federal. There's, there's nothing expressly prohibiting this ordinance or its terms under the statutes as they exist. No subject to challenge.
And I think it's important to know that, that this is, I don't want to say a, a gross expansion of what we had, this is a modest expansion of, of what we've had before. And so we're not, we're not breaking new ground or anything like that. I think it's also important to know that a lot of the reason why these ordinances are crafted the way they are is actually to take the city, I'll say, in general, to take responsibility of those offenders that resided here when they offended and for them to come back to where they have support structures in order to work through their situation. The problem and the reason why these, I guess, became necessary, for lack of a better term, is because other jurisdictions weren't holding up to that same responsibility. And so this is actually forcing them to do that.
Got it. Any other questions for the chief before we go to roll call vote on this ordinance? I'm sorry, I've got one more from our attorney who's going to clarify yet one more thing.
No, all I wanted to do is to check to see if you have in your packets a signature, an ordinance in signature form, because I don't.
I don't either.
And I know I, I sent one to, I emailed one to Lisa on Friday. I don't think that prohibits you from adopting the ordinance. Age 90?
Age 90.
Is it?
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, I think that came in late Friday, so maybe some might have, had gotten.
Yeah, I don't know if I've got that. The important thing is if you have it. So if you do, that's great.
You've got it, you passed wrong against signatures on?
Yeah, the clerks has that.
Yeah.
Thanks, chief. Thanks for providing the markup because that certainly facilitated the council's understanding of the changes. Thanks.
Thank you. So we have a motion, we have a second, no more discussion, let's go roll call vote. It's regarding the motion to adopt the ordinance amending the municipal code Title IX, Chapter IX, Section Three of the city ordinance pertaining to place of domicile for certain sex offenders. Jamie?
B C Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Rettmacher.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Wazowski.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, chief. Darla?
I just wanted to bring one thing up.
That's for the chronic nuisance.
Well, the reason I have to say it's packet chronic nuisance.
Online it is. Ninety is in sequence online. Okay, yes. So on the computer it is, hopefully they can just print it out and just.
She's going to be, she's going to be passing that around. Can you make sure that we get copies of that too? I know we're going to be signing it.
They were talking about sex offenders.
Okay. Those who don't have it on their computers and have paper, if you can get copies, that'd be great. Thanks, chief.
And do remember for those watching at home, it is the same ordinance. One is an edit tracking the changes. The other is in the format that gets signed. It is in content in essence, the same document. Yeah. Better be.
Thank you. As long as you're up, we've got number C, which is the ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter Seven of city ordinance pertaining to the chronic nuisance premises and a motion to waive the reading and adopt that ordinance. So let's get the motion and second done and then we'll have the chief walk us through that again. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Thanks, Jeff. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Adam? Chief, you're up again. And that is page number 91 in our package, correct?
Yeah, you have your packet, I have my copies, so they don't necessarily jive, but you should have exactly what I have.
It's 91, 92, and then it jumps to 84 and then up to 80, 98, which is kind of odd, but it is what it is.
So you should have a memo. And then you should have the, if they're, if it's two-sided, one, two, three, four pages of the ordinance with the markup in yellow, additions in yellow, strikeouts in red with lines stricken out.
Thank you.
Okay, so much like the other one, I'll just kind of go through the memo and talk about each one of the things because they do actually follow in order the changes in the ordinance itself. So we've had this chronic nuisance premises ordinance on file for quite a long time. I was here when, when the ordinance was put in place and it was because we had particular problems at a number of locations repeatedly as third shift officers. And it was meant to address those locations where we're constantly going there as a law enforcement agency and perhaps even as inspections and other departments and dealing with enforcement issues. And it's just kind of one after the other and spending a lot of resources, time, money of the city, dealing with one particular location when we all know that there are a larger group of people in town that also need our resources and our efforts as well. So the ordinance was put into place earlier this year. We addressed the council, I think at a work session, and talked about some of the things that we've been running into repeatedly and, and wanted to make, make some changes to this ordinance in particular to make sure that we're encompassing all properties within the city and not just poking this necessarily on residential. And so that's where we, we start going. I want to say, and it should be noted, that there was a lot of work put into this and not just by me, but by Assistant Chief, by Elizabeth, by the fire chief, and, and of course, Jack as well. I probably missed someone else, but this was a group effort. We also have the city manager and some residents, local residents that had concerns about a particular property and heard their concerns as well, as this was already a work in progress. And so we feel very comfortable and confident that the changes that we're looking at here will address the issues sufficiently. As you can see, we also looked at a number of other jurisdictions as, as reference and come to find out that most of them almost have the exact same wording of our ordinance. And so whether we stole it from them or they stole it from us years ago, it's hard to say, but the, the wording out there is very much the same, save the fact that we are now making changes in addition to it. So to kind of get into it, the first bullet point, you had a specific definition of chronic nuisance. This is a really good suggestion. It was defined in there, but it was kind of mixed in with where we had the requirement of sending a chronic nuisance notice. And so there really never really was a, just its own standard, clear definition of what a chronic nuisance location is. So we created that. So if you see here, it just moves the language from what was in 973 under the, the premise notice, kind of strangely located, it moves it to its own definition. It doesn't really add anything to the language, it's just a moving. Add the issuance of written or documented verbal warnings under the enforcement action. So instead of it just being a citation issued or some type of physical arrest, it could be a warning or a documented verbal warning. And we wanted to make sure we clarified documented verbal warning because we didn't want it to be something where somebody said, oh yeah, I, I gave him a warning a while back and there was actually no documentation of that. So we want to make sure that everything's above board and, and ethical and that there's no issues with any of that. Adds being, someone being a party too. So it's not just the individual itself, but it could be someone who participated or in some way were party to the offense that's occurring there. Moving violations of ordinance related to 96 of Title IX from 971 U to its own new subsection. Again, this is just kind of made for clarity's sake. So this was already in the ordinance, but it was combined under U and we're just parsing that out and creating its own place so that it's not teamed up with another ordinance. The creation of a new subsection under 971, this will be a subsection X to address fire code violations. So we talked again with the fire chief and, and it is actually in the, in the original ordinance, there is a section in there that talks about repeated violations and/or continued violations under building, fire, and other codes. And, and that's the only place that those things were even loosely mentioned. And so we wanted to make sure that it was appropriately mentioned under the area where we're delineating what is not acceptable. So adding the fire code violations to that. Likewise, the creation of a new subsection Y under 971 to address public health code violations. Again, same thing. That was also mentioned in that other portion of the existing ordinance. And this is just making sure that it's, it's specific and delineated so there isn't any confusion or misunderstanding by anyone. And then next, modify the definition of premises to better define properties and locations without excluding specific locations within the city. So as I said in the very beginning, the ordinance before was much focused greatly on residential and this would expand that to commercial and business type present, properties, namely lodging facilities and things like that. Doesn't give anyone a pass, more or less. Adds a police department's records as an option for resources or a source, I should say, that may be used in determining last known address. So in the existing ordinance, it defined the assessor records as the record to be utilized to determine the last known address for someone. You'll find that because of our frequent contact with individuals, our in-house records are actually very, very much up to date and, and very, you know, relevant. So it's adding that as a, a potential source to be used for last known address. Let's see. Adds an owner action plan abatement fee. So one of the things that was discussed at the council work session several months ago and one of the things that was discussed at the, I'll say, community meeting that we had with a couple of concerned property owners of which, at least one council member was present, we talked about having an additional fee that kind of took it out of the fine realm, just because of all the, the things that go along with a court fine. There are a lot of things that go on in the background that don't, that don't recoup the costs that are spent in dealing with this chronic nuisance property. So as I mentioned in the beginning, we are expending not just the police department, but sometimes other departments, whether it's the inspections department or the rec department or DPW, they're expending a lot of time and resources in dealing with some of these chronic locations for any number of reasons and those costs are not being recouped. So there's a, there is a penalty that's in place, that's the fine, that was always there and remains unchanged. But now there is a cost component to that that helps recover the cost of the time, staff time that is put into dealing with these chronic nuisance locations. So this owner action plan fee of $200, which is, is stated in the ordinance, that is, how was that number derived? Did we just pull that out of the air or we say $200 sounds good? It was looking at like how much time, just from a police department perspective, would we need to spend on dealing with an? we need to spend on dealing with an owner action or abatement plan with a property owner because of this chronic nuisance? If it gets to that level, and we're having to meet with this individual, work with them to develop a plan, help them follow through with that plan, monitor that plan, make sure, again, that they're in compliance, and deal with any enforcement issues all along that way, those things all take time and money that the taxpayers are paying to deal with one chronic nuisance property. And so there should be a cost recovery component to that, not something that's unreasonable, or something that is meant to add to the punishment, but something to recover the cost of the services that are being provided, and not necessarily directed to others.
I dare say that might be, that's like four hours of an officer's time at a fully loaded rate with benefits.
Probably at least.
Yeah, so it's, yeah. Good luck getting that done with that.
Right.
I mean, it's modest in the scheme of things.
Yeah. And if I might ask just before your question, is that this component allows us to be added to the property taxes, whereas a fine does not? And so that was something that the council had expressed interest in the last time we spoke, which was quite a while ago. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So that answers my first question. The second one is, when we get that for the property taxes, how do we distribute it if it's in multiple departments? So if it goes to DPW, because some of these require them, or parks and rec or inspections, or police? Is there a specific spot it goes?
Yeah, generally with most things, they always end up back in the general fund, and I can tell you that, you know, we'll have to account for the time, but from a police department perspective, the bottom line is that there's a cost coming back to the city, and whether or not it comes directly to me, or it's parsed out in some percentage to another department, I'm not really, I'm not personally too concerned about that. I just want to make sure that, you know, that it's there and that exists.
I would agree, I'd keep it simple, otherwise you're spending accounting time trying to sort out what, you know, account code this has to. So obviously you're doing time on top of time on top of time, right?
But things would be delineated in invoice, because actually in the ordinance, it does state that we're required in the notice to provide to the individual, the property owner of the chronic location, that we delineate what the fines are and what the costs are. And so those things would be parsed out, so it wouldn't just be some nebulous bill that the person got, and they don't know why or what it's for. It does have to be explained and specified out.
Yep. Now, would this also go like, for instance, say somebody's calling the police on a regular basis, please get there and there's nothing wrong, and this keeps going on? Now, does that transfer nuisance back over to the person making calls?
No.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I know exactly what you mean.
Now that makes it a nuisance for you.
Right. So unfortunately, a lot of times the law doesn't necessarily, I'll say the word here, whether it's a nuisance to the police department or not, this is about a nuisance to the community. So I'll give you an example of a statute, disorderly conduct, for example. A person might be swearing at us, and saying a lot of things, and doing a lot of things to us, and as much as it might reach a disorderly conduct level for everyone else in the community, it does not for us. So this is really about nuisances to the community, not necessarily just nuisances to the police department. I would also add that there's kind of a couple of components to your question. Yes, it could potentially include a situation where we got repeated calls to a location, and it was determined that they were false calls, but not in the context where the property owner is the one calling. So there is a provision in the ordinance, if you look here, which has been in place and which we will continue to have in place, that says there are exemptions to who can be, how it's determined that they're a chronic nuisance location. So if the property owner is the one that's calling, or the person who's in control of the property is the one that's calling, then that exempts them from the penalties of this ordinance. So to explain that by use of an example, let's say we have a business or a lodging facility in the community where there's repeated problems, but the manager or the owner of that property is the one that's calling, because they want to make sure that their property is staying within the law, they don't want disturbances there, they want to attract, you know, clientele, and they don't want to detract from their property and their business, and so they're calling, and they're asking for our assistance to address that issue. That would exempt them from the chronic nuisance situation. On the other hand, which we also experience, is that you may have a property owner or a business owner that doesn't necessarily care what's going on at their location, and all these things are happening, and other people are having to call on behalf of the business. And so that would not exempt that property or that business from the penalties of this ordinance. So those are kind of two examples that kind of address the question that you're referring to. I don't know, was there anything else that you wanted to add, Ben, you came up?
No, I think a good example, like you said, is the police can't really be nuisanceed by anybody, but we have had instances in the past where like the fire department was dealing with the same individual constantly calling, and maybe they get those three citations, and that changes it up a little bit.
No, okay, so what if somebody's making these calls, and it's actually a nuisance to the business?
Right, right.
Now...
Yeah, so I mean, there are, yeah, all of those things certainly can be utilized in that sense.
You're saying if it wasn't really a nuisance call, but they're calling anyway, and they're, okay.
Yeah, so someone's trying to, you know, they have a spat with another property owner, and so they're constantly calling on this property owner and saying, "Hey, this is going on over here," so that it gets police response, and then hopefully, you know, it generates a chronic nuisance situation. Yeah, absolutely. And I think frankly, you know, we, there was concern about that when we talked about the loud noise ordinance earlier this year, you know, and that we had a lot of calls at a particular location in town, some of them were substantiated, some of them were not. Doesn't necessarily mean there wasn't a violation, but at certain points in time, we couldn't substantiate it. But did that create the criteria for us to deem it a chronic nuisance location? No, it did not, because until we had substantiated violations there, we didn't feel comfortable in, I did not feel comfortable in deeming that a chronic nuisance location. So that same standard would exist. So, let's see. Moving on, clarifies language under 979, violations and penalties, to clearly delineate forfeitures with court costs from other costs and fees. So this language is already there, but I just changed it a little bit so that it was clear that there's a difference between when we're talking about the fines and fees that get communicated to the person and what they owe, that there is a clear distinction between this is the fine and the court costs that go along with it, the forfeiture and the court costs that go along with it, and then these are fees. So that it just kind of separates those two, it makes it a little bit clearer. If you read the original language, it kind of blends those two things together, and it can make it a little bit unclear for the individual to discern what's what. And then lastly, which kind of goes along with that point a little bit, is allows the notice from the finance department to be included with the notice from the police department, to reduce duplication of efforts and the potential for confusion as to the costs and fees owed. So if you look at the existing ordinance, it mentions under the notice area for the police department that we're required to send them a notice, and we're required to indicate, you know, costs and fees and forfeitures in there. And then at the very end, it says that the finance department also has that obligation, that they have to send a letter within so many days, and there needs to be a response that also indicates what the costs are. And to me, I looked at that and said, "Okay, this person's going to be getting anywhere around three different communications from the city, perhaps a ticket from the police department, a notice from the police department that may or may not have costs in it, and then a notice from the finance department that has costs in it." And from a customer perspective, that's confusing to me. And we want to make sure that people are in compliance, and if we're going to send them something that ends up to be somewhat confusing, and then we hold them the task that, "Hey, you didn't pay this, and you didn't pay that," when they might have been a little bit confused on what they all owed, because they got three different communications, we want to make sure that that doesn't occur. So it's really combining that notice together, so that we can put all the fees owed, not the fine or forfeiture, but the fees owed, under one communication instead of multiple. So that was the intention behind that.
Okay. Thank you for walking us through that.
Sure.
Any other questions for the chief on this ordinance regarding the chronic nuisance? Thank you. Seeing none, we had a discussion. Jamie, it is roll call time.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Telke.
Aye.
Tracy Koch.
Aye.
We move on to D. I just got a question. How are these going to be communicated, the changes in these two ordinances we just discussed? One is, I mean, they're not small changes, and you've got 11,000 people out there who are going to need to understand it. What is the plan for communication? Just curious.
Yeah, so it is very difficult to get the word out to everyone about this, but the general rule that's in play with all changes to ordinance is that they're required to be published before we enforce them. And so that's been the case for all the changes that we've made throughout the last couple of years, and that'll be...
Publish being on the website, in the city site? Is it going there, utility bill?
It has to actually go in the newspaper, and it'll be done that way. We can also put it on our website. I said we were also going to take the additional steps, particularly with the sex offender ordinance, that we were going to do that. We were also going to do that with some of what we might call our potential chronic nuisance locations. We're going to reach out to them proactively and let them know.
It'd be good also to share with like, you know, some of the, whether it's the chamber, TRBA, whatever, as long as it's affecting some of their businesses, that they're aware of it, and they could also maybe invite you in for a luncheon or something, you could explain some of the changes, so.
So we attend regularly the TRBA meetings, and that is something that I've done in the past, and which I'll do in this particular case as well, is I'll send it to the TRBAA to disseminate amongst them as well.
Thank you.
We'll include something on the utility bills. I think most importantly though, too, and we talked about this when some of those concerned neighbors that you all had heard from about a property, is again, this ordinance is going to be enforced even-handedly, of course, going forward, but it doesn't hurt to know that perhaps your business precipitated a change in the ordinance, because we came to realize that the old ordinance didn't necessarily apply to classes of property other than residential. And there are properties that clearly are nuisances within their neighborhoods that now fall under this ordinance.
Thank you, chief.
We hope they aren't in the future, but...
Thank you for letting me ask that question, too. Thank you. Let's move it on to D. Resolution naming the city-owned Harborfront Park property at the foot of Jefferson Street. It's kind of called, we call it the secret park in our little code word up here, because we don't have a name for it, but it's a motion to waive the reading and adopt the resolution inserting the name of the park, and we've got a couple of different names, a recommendation from our park advisory rec board, and then there was another one that came in, so you got those two packages in front of you. But let's start with the motion to waive the reading and adopt the resolution, and we'll come out of here with the name for a park. Do I have a motion?
Kurt, I'll make a motion to waive the reading and adopt the resolution.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion?
This might warrant an introduction, because that motion is effectively meaningless, because there's a blank in it, but...
Yeah, I said it's going to be a motion to talk about the names.
Sometimes an introduction in advance of the motion is helpful to guide that, but only if council is interested in hearing anything.
Okay. So in front of us, and I'll let the representative on the council who's at the advisory rec board talk a little bit about the recommendation from the ARB in the name of the park space, maybe to fill in the gap on this...
And maybe staff would have some input as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So Adam, I'm turning to you.
Sure. At ARB, we did come up with the name Rivers End Park. I think it was over two meetings where members of the committee came up with different names, and we voted on them, and this is the one we came up with, was Rivers End. I know there's certain people that don't like that name, and that's why it's on our agenda here tonight, to either approve the Rivers End Park name or to get a different name. I have no problem with Rivers End Park, but...
Okay. Darla?
I have a problem with Confluence Park. I think it's bulky, it's kind of clumsy, it isn't very pretty, you know, but I mean, I kind of like Rivers End Park. I can see the point, though, where it's, the rivers are reaching their destiny, not just coming to an end, but something like maybe Unity Park, you know, because you're getting the unification of the two rivers, or, but I guess my point is, is that I don't like Confluence Park personally.
Jay had a really good one.
Yes, Jay?
I was just thinking Harbor View Park. I mean, it's, if you stand in that park, you got the perfect view of the harbor, so Harbor View Park would be a simple...
Anybody else? Bonnie?
I don't like Confluence Park either, because it's difficult, just because it's difficult to say. I agree with you. Rivers End sounds better, but Harbor View is nice, but I suppose you should leave it up, not leave it up to the committee, but it should go back to committee if you're going to change it that drastically.
Bill?
I think Jay's got something there. I think Harbor View Park would be awesome name for that.
I like that a lot.
To vote, so Mark, you have a question, too? Thank you, Bill, for that.
I have a comment. First of all, I'm glad we're going to name it. I have my own name I used, but I'm glad we're going to name it. The reason I like Confluence is because the definition of Confluence means flowing together, the gathering. A Confluence would give us a footprint to reach back and share the history. We all know that those two rivers used to have different Native American names, the Native American centuries ago used to gather there once a year for their annual assemblies. It just gives us a perspective that we could spin off and talk about in the future, you know, but I'm pleased we're going to finally name the park, but Rivers End to me is kind of Harbor View, you know, we got Harbor Park across the hall. I like Confluence, but that's just my opinion.
Adam?
I kind of like Harbor View more than what I like Rivers End to this point now, but with that being said, I think Bonnie has a point that should probably go back to ARB and then come back before here, because it kind of just overshadows that body that was instructed to come up with a name, and now we're kind of just saying, "No, we're going to name it ourselves." I guess I would go in hindsight and say, "Then why the hell did I do it?" As a member of that committee. I mean, we don't have to bless it, but we should send it back.
I don't disagree, but we also have to, we just did that Project 365 committee, so I'm not going to go on record and say that, but... Terry is our park and rec director, and she may vote right in here, but you can give us your point of view as to maybe why this came up, the name that came up, and...
Yep.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, ARB did discuss Harbor View Park as a name, and voted against it because Harbor Park is across the way, and they thought that was too confusing. Where's Harbor Park? Where's Harbor View Park? When you're kind of looking across the way. So that name was discussed, and Rivers End is where both the rivers end together, and that's why they chose that name.
Okay. No Surge Park or anything like that? Okay. Greg, you going to say something?
Yeah, thank you. The other option might be, at this point, with referring it back to the advisory rec board, I'm not a person, I have no vote on this, I'm not a real fan of Rivers End, I don't know if they go into a hole, or they disappear, or they dry up, because too much has been pulled out for irrigation. It just seems sort of fatalistic. Yep, they ended. No, they actually joined something even greater. How about you suggest the community offer names to the advisory rec board, and they do a blind taste test, or, you know, on those ads? I'll offer a $25 QuickTrip card as the first prize, if they want to do that, something, you know. I think we can do better. Or the community can do better.
I don't have a problem with that.
You know, Harbor View's good, it's just we got Harbor Park already, that doesn't win, yeah, that doesn't win the originality prize, but at least this, you know, you do have a view here.
So with that said, any other comments? Adam?
No, good catch by Terry there, with Harbor Park across the road. I guess I didn't even realize it until, even though we may have talked about it, it might have just went right over my head.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be willing to put something together and put it out to the community to have advice.
I think that'd be cool.
So why don't we make a recommendation, or we've got a motion to look at this, so do you want, we could either table it, or we could make a motion to, change the motion to push it back to the ARB?
With the suggestion from the community, as Greg suggested.
With the suggestion from the committee.
I'd like to, there's no hurry, we haven't been the last, how long? I'd like to, there's no hurry. We haven't been the last, how long? This never had a name. It's called the Secret Park. So let's give it to the community to consider and let them give the input and see. I mean, that'd be the great way to do it, and let's try to determine, maybe a month from now, we gather the community input.
So that's your suggestion? So do I have someone who made the original motion can change the motion to that, so he can second it and then kick it back?
I'll make a motion to send it back to the ARB committee, and for them to decide what they want to do.
And who seconded that?
I'll second.
No, I'm sorry. Who originally did?
Oh.
Jeff did.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of doing that?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay. Who said no?
I did. So I want to go to the community.
Thank you. It's going back to the community and ARB.
Oh, the ARB is going to go to the community. Okay, that's fine. I'll vote yes.
You want to change your vote?
Yes, I'll vote yes.
Okay, thank you. So it's unanimous. Thank you. And thank you for that discussion. And so it was good to hopefully have a naming eventually. Number E, final authorization for purchase of the fire department ladder truck, a motion to authorize the contracting for the purchase of the Spartan brand 100-foot platform aerial apparatus per specifications approved by the fire department at a total cost of 1.1, 1,176,701 dollars, to be paid with a draw payment of 400,000, with a balance of 776,701 dollars to be paid upon delivery in July of 2021. Is that 2022?
Sorry, that's an error. Should be 2022.
I was going to say, sorry. Balance from city borrowing in 2022. So I'm looking for a motion in a second, and then we got the chief up here to answer any questions. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Mark? Chief, you are up. Any other explanation you want to give us on the document 101 that's in front of us, correct? Okay.
I'd like to say no, but I'm sure that won't suffice. So we currently, we went out, as you guys know, we've, we've been working through this process of buying this truck for quite a while. We actually went out to Nebraska. We had a pre-build meeting, as they say, where we went through tip to tip and constructed the truck virtually, went through, changed some things, ended up saving approx, just under $14,000. That's that change order A, so that's the amount of price that we knocked off the initial. As you can see, the prepayment discount of 12,712 dollars. That's from that 400,000 that was borrowed for this year through the capital budget to put towards the ladder truck. So we come out with the final number of 1,176,701 dollars. And after that 400,000 dollar payment, it will be 776,701 dollars due next year at delivery.
Okay. Any questions to the chief regarding the truck? It's in two sections, and we're borrowing money next year to help pay for the balance, which will be the second payment in July of 2022. A roll call vote on this one? I'd rather do that than it all in favor. It's a lot of money. Thank you, Jamie.
Jay Remicker.
Absolutely.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. For information only, I'll just jump, I'll just jump to that real quick, Greg. City council work session. Are we doing the 30th or the 23rd, sir?
That's what I was prepared to ask the council. We have five Mondays this month. We, last meeting, thought the 30th would be the best. What I'd like to suggest, we've got an update on some property matters in closed session that may have a bearing on maybe meeting the 23rd instead of the 30th. And quite honestly, I'd like the opportunity to talk with some individual council members between now and the work session, to see if there's some recalibration of the scope of the Central Park West project that would warrant getting consideration of something different, as opposed to just saying it's over as of tonight's. So I, I would like to ask our folks open for the 23rd in lieu of the 30th, if that works out. I came in tonight concerned about the property matter. I'd love to have some discussion on the other.
I have one question with that. I, I told the swim club, who we invited in here for the 30th, that it would be the 30th.
Oh, and it, okay.
Can we follow up with them, just to see if they would be okay with the 23rd?
Sure. And I'm sorry, I was saying that was a September meeting. I wasn't following. So you're right.
Just to make sure not that we invite them and then uninvite them.
Yeah, we don't want to invite them to an empty room either. Yeah, I can do that as well.
Otherwise, I think it'd be okay, as long as...
Okay, as long as we, that works.
Right, have that...
Either date works for, let's do a quick polling. Let's do that.
Sure, thank you.
Does either date work for you, Mark?
30th, I'm not going to be here. The 23rd would be great. I'll be here.
Tracy?
Either.
Jay?
Better than me.
And you're okay?
I'm okay. I may not be here on the 30th. I might be in Europe.
Okay. Well, good for you. You can get in and get back. Okay.
23rd works.
23rd works better?
Well, it works. I mean, either.
Either one. Okay, thank you. Bonnie?
They both work for me.
Either day.
Okay.
Thank you for that flexibility. I wouldn't presume to reschedule it without making sure the swim club folks can make it. Thank you.
Can we just reach out to them? Are you going to reach out to them?
I'll, in fact, I'll plan to email Mark right after the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that heads up also, Adam. And we have our September 7th, which is a Tuesday, so please put that on your calendar. That's a little different than our normal Mondays. That is our regular meeting, our first meeting in September at 6 o'clock. So, Greg, do we need a closed session?
We do indeed.
Okay. So the city council reserves the right to enter in the closed session for Wisconsin Stat 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Today we'll discuss the possible city assistance to economic development projects, discuss the possible property sale of 606 Parkway Boulevard, and discuss possible property purchase. So I'm looking for a motion to go into closed.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Kurt.
Okay, any discussion before we go to a roll call? Seeing none, roll call will go into closed. Jamie?
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. For information only, I'll just jump, I'll just jump to that